I call the Board Meeting of Hillsborough's 31 day order. Our work session begins with the facilities naming process and I think Casey's leading the conversation.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. This is to follow up our August second recruit re- treat agenda item where we outline the process for naming ES number 29. Following our board adopted process early in the year for that. Since that board meeting, there are two kind of requests from the board. Well, one main request was to get some more historical information on the two names that were in the top four. So a biography with Virginia Beek and Millie Trimble, that was provided some historical knowledge in your packet. This work session is to be used as a really for you as a board to discuss the names and work on narrowing those names down with the hopes that we come to consensus tonight in the meeting. This would follow our outlined process timeline from the very beginning so that we could potentially put one, potentially two names on first reading tonight for a final adoption at the October meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions on the process. Nothing significantly significant has changed since that board update in August of the process. We did have one person reach out concerned why their choice was not on on their list of names. And it was it was due to the fact that it was after a person with living relatives and there wasn't additional cultural significant revelant, re- relevance to that name.
Don't take my block to him, it would be a great idea.
So I'm I can assist or answer any questions about the process or where we are. I'd like to just open it up for you guys to have a discussion on the names that we have forwarded to you or if there's any follow up that I can help with.
Any questions regarding the recent packet or so before I guess we get to questions, just something to clarify. In what context would you generally put two names on 30 day review as opposed to one?
Yeah, so you know, again, that hasn't necessarily happened. I think there are a couple of reasons where that could be. Number one is I think if there was a significant public interest in some groups that were after a name or the other name and the board wanted maybe to have some more time to narrow it further from the four to the two in that case. I think and the other would be is if I guess, you know, it's the board's prerogative to adopt this name and vote on this name. So you have the ability to make changes to that. But that I can't recall that happening in the time that I've been here. We haven't named that many buildings, but it it could. We have so I don't wanna I didn't want to say, oh, it's it has to be one or three or four. I mean, the hope is that
That we discussed tonight, it would be great to get to one on which we put on 30 day reading downstairs.
Yeah, yeah. And we've gone through the pro our outline process with really little to no objections or interruptions, or I don't believe that we'd be able to gather more information if we were to do anything different than what we have now.
All right. So discussion on so the the goal is for us to spend this time figuring out if we have consensus over one of the names on the table being presented for us. So with that in mind, does anybody have anything to add?
The only thing I think that needs to be added, it actually nothing, we talked about it and we just we hope that the next time the board can get involved at an early stage. Because we kind of feel like it comes to us like, uh, right now. And the first thing we all said was, wow, there's no Hispanic, Latino names. What what happened to that? And I know where everybody's going, but just a thought.
Yeah, and I I appreciate that comment. And so I think one of the things, you know, when we outlined the process in January or February, I think that would have been probably the time to have maybe a more in-depth prerogative, hey, we want to maybe target these types of names. What we I can say is what we're our plan is to, once we get through this process, is we're gonna have another discussion. And we may get to the point where similar to what the city of Hillsborough has done, is they have kind of front loaded a list of names that I think the council has approved. So when they have a naming thing come up, they were able to go back to that list and say, oh, we do have this group of, you know, significant names or culturally significant names that the board is already aware of and it's kind of vetted. So I think that is something that we want to do because, you know, the way that it is right now is we're seeking, we're soliciting feedback from the community. Depending on maybe where the community is or what's going on, the interest could be really high or really low or in between. Where I think it would be helpful maybe to have, hey, here's a list that the board has approved. Add to, you know, we'll take suggestions, but you already have that preloaded list.
And in this particular case, in what will be the attendance area, there's still a lot of unfinished hope.
Correct.
So you'll go copyright that list or so you just go copyright that list or?
No, and we had a member of the city of Hillsborough on our naming task force and and we were kind of quizzing her more on how'd you get to this? And, you know, how'd you come up with that name for that park or that street? Because they use it for not just buildings, you know, a whole bunch of different things. And definitely will reach out to her if she was involved in that kind of formulation of that and working with them if that's where we want to go and see how they did it.
I would input on the names, yeah?
Yeah, I guess I was thinking about a while ago, we had thought about also going back and renaming some schools that my deeds now did a little part in that name. Or thinking about, I think, moving away from I think the culture, especially of colonization, has always been about naming after like people, think of this place now it's mine. Versus like, what does it represent? What is what is the nature and the things that are around that actually representative of the community that's there or what you see when you go there. So I'm very much now thinking about naming it like Tannenack is probably my favorite one. It's I think it's something that people recognize. There's already maybe a district or something like that.
In a park.
In a park. And so there's a connection there. But I definitely feel more about moving away from people and more about community.
And that was a pretty consistent theme in a lot of the comments, you know, we asked people to choose what their name preference was. And then a lot of the comments, it was kind of just what you had said is, you know, let's move away from naming them, naming schools after people and go towards a place or something. And we'll say that, you know, over the last 22 years, at least in the district, a little bit before that, most of those schools that have been built, all of them are not named after people. You know, you have the Potomac Free Orchards, Witch Hazel, you know, which is was a rename, a continuum school, but we have done that recently.
Yeah, I would add, but knowing that there is only schools named after men in our school district and we don't have any, my second choice would be Virginia. But we had to put two out there and see reaction from the community in the 30 day review, I would have chose two.
Go on, Ron, say, would you come, you talk about what what would name you like?
Yeah, I some similar sentiments to Erica that the move away from naming for people, like you said, problematic. I also like Tamarack, I think for the same reasons. It's right to the community and we have a park named there. I favor that one.
Just do what you'd like to land on this discussion.
I really like the name Tamarack. It's very elementary to the park, like we said. And I think that in terms of like naming like three acres, there's already like every bill park, there's already lot acres. So I think that might be very easy to give just moves to those row.
Yeah, I mean, I I agree with both of you guys. I like the moving away from people's names. I feel like it doesn't do any benefit. Especially down the road, having to rename schools. I feel like it would just be a safe bet to move away from that. And additionally, like they said, I like the way that it fits.
Yeah, same here. Like park near close that actually was the same name and, you know, now that I do hear these comment, it did confuse me a little with the Redvale and Flat Acres. So I think yeah, it's a the great, great name.
I I have no reason, no substantive reason to disagree with the rule. They picked these four and the way that the the community has responded. I I think it makes sense that Tamarack is the name and and I agree.
Is it Shan or who wants to go first? Maybe Lisa, you're on the left of my screen, so.
Did you say me or Shan? Sorry. Shan.
So you're up.
Okay, sorry. So when we're on Zoom, it's a a different volume and it's much harder to hear the folks in the room. So if you could like, you like, you're yelling. I would appreciate it like a whole bunch. And then I still am not sure if it's my turn or Shan's turn.
It is your turn, Lisa.
Thank you. I'm sorry. So I I agree with everything that has been said and I appreciate Erica for bringing up those concerns, which I I share. I am not a fan of naming facilities after people. And I like that we have certain like rules around length of time from passing in our facilities process, but I all aside from just my own personal hesitation to do that, I love the idea of naming the school Tamarack like the park that's nearby and having that sort of community connection is really important. And also in the round two survey results, you can see that Tamarack seems to be the leader from the community as well. So I just, I don't think there's really any need to keep talking about it. Let's just do that.
I I agree. I don't think I have anything more substantive to add than everything that's already been said. I do like the name Tamarack and that also seems like that's been kind of the the chosen one from the community as well. So I'm good with Tamarack.
Yeah, I I too am good with Tamarack. I mean, like the chart with the red and green is one of it was the most liked and the least disliked, right? So I mean, oh, Patrick, sorry.
Oh, no, no, you go ahead.
No, good.
Yeah, well, before I before we had this meeting, I was sort of torn between Tamarack and Beek because I don't know that I have the the same, I can see both benefits and drawbacks to naming after people. I think that the the benefit could be that if you have someone who was a special example, that could be a neat thing for folks to look to as a as a community exemplar. So I don't I have many concerns about that, but I think I take seriously what what else has raised that you know, you can, their drawbacks or potential drawbacks are real as well. And so I agree with what Lisa said that given that the community has such a strong positive response to Tamarack, I'm inclined to to go that direction.
Yes, I mean, it feels like that's the obvious reasons. I don't feel like there's any wrong, like, yeah, I'm I'm good with Tamarack as well. So I think that's that's where we're at. Yeah, the most like least disliked and so when's the last time we did name a building after?
I have to, I can go back and look at our list. I want to say it would have had to have been
Was that?
I probably was Miller, wasn't it?
I guess if we wanted to count that, yeah.
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Yeah. As far as a brick and mortar is comprehensive school. I'll go back and look. You're going to think about this.
It's been, yeah, I mean, it's now the thing we are handling.
Probably Patters.
I think Patterson, Patterson and Emily, no. Name that for a person.
But it's clearly a thing we've been moving away from. Right? If none of us can remember, yeah. It's clearly a thing.
I voted on Jake.
Now Lisa's been on the board forever. All right. So I so someone will make a motion downstairs, probably goes ahead and the format, I think, you're right with that.
Yeah, I think they have the format, just shoot the name, whatever name or yeah, downstairs.
All right. Oh, oh, wait, you, Ray, go to pass on. Oh, yeah. All right. Any further discussion on Tamarack Elementary? All right. Nice job, Casey. It feels like, I think Nancy's right. Like I think when we began the agenda planning session, I realized, oh, we're picking the names today. It was a little bit of surprise. I know it's probably the timeline we laid out and all that, but it felt weird how late we got involved in one to one decision. So maybe we, you know, Mike's Mike had talked about, maybe we look at how the board's influences in naming things going forward. It's probably going to be a bit before we build out the building. But yeah, it feels like at least for the sake of future boards, we should take the lessons we've learned about, oh, maybe we want to get involved a little bit earlier.
Yeah, I would think a good maybe insertion into that would be once we have that kind of first round of community feedback where there's this long list, we can do a a work session because that that is that in this timeline, you know, that was in May, April, May-ish, you know, and then have another then we continue with the survey and then in August, we have kind of the second round of survey results. Once it's kind of been narrowed, that might be a better way. We just want to give the board an opportunity to add to that list.
Yeah, right. Because I think at that point, we may have said something like, gee, right? Yeah. Could we look at a different culture to honor saying that we are graduating in this district?
And we could add those names that the board comes up with to the survey with the with the group or however we want to do that. So there's some flexibility there.
And just taking a minute to thank everybody who just paid in the committee. It looks like there's a few hundred people. So I mean, yeah, thank you, everybody for participating in the committee to help us name our newest elementary school. Next time on the agenda is Beth, going to talk to us about our legislative priorities. For those of you who don't know, the session begins February 1st-ish, so they'll go for six months. I hope to resist the urge to work in someone's office. What do you have, boys?
Okay. So for Shan and Lisa, one of the things I passed out a couple of pages, one of the things we're looking at are the 2021 legislative priorities, which you can find on the Budget Matters page of our website. So just our website slash budget. And then you'll find it out over on the right hand side if you want to look at those. But then we'll just be talking through the rest. This is just some some starting points for our conversation. And we decided to utilize this time because we had a little time in this work session. And since four of you were interested in participating on the subcommittee about legislative priorities, we figured, hey, why not just go ahead and use this time to get some initial thoughts down? Fun fact, we will see the most turnover in our legislative body in 2023 than we've seen in 100 years. So it's really crazy. So all 60 House seats are up for election and 16 of 30 Senate seats are up for election and there will be a new governor. So predictions are that at least 30 of the 90 seats in the legislature will be filled by new members. So that's a third of new people that haven't been there before, haven't heard what we've had to say before. And, you know, to what to varying degrees are just kind of new to the whole process. So it'll be a really interesting time to be advocating for various things. Obviously, our advocacy will be targeted at K-12 education. But you know, we are facing a lot of challenges. One of those big ones being the fact that as a state, over the last couple of years, we've lost 20,000 students. So that's really significant. At a time, at one point, it was down like 30,000, but 10,000 have come back. I'm not sure where they went. Where they came back from, but we're down about 20,000 now. So that is definitely going to be a factor heading into the appropriations part of the legislative session. Our allocation, our biennial allocation for the 2123 biennium was 9.3 billion. And right now, early indications are that the starting point, what the legislature might pitch first for K-12 is 9.52, which is only an increase of 220 million, which represents about 2.3% over the entire biennium. And if you just look at what we just our district has done with negotiations with our unions and you know, other districts around us certainly bargained different amounts for them. But even if you just take like 3% salary increase year over year, salary is just, I mean, granted, it's a very large part of our our expenditures every year. However, you know, cost of doing business in all areas goes up every year. And just even using a modest assumption of three to three and a half percent per year would mean that realistically speaking, we would need a state school fund allocation that's more like 7% higher for the biennium than it was this last biennium. And what we're probably going to be looking at is more on the lines of 2.3 for the whole biennium, like 1.6 or 7% per year. So that's going to be a challenge for us. But it's also going to be a difficult pitch to make potentially with declining enrollment. So one of the things that, you know, we've started talking about this a little bit and, you know, while it may be true, it it not necessarily the most compelling argument. However, education is a system. Systems take a certain amount of infrastructure and people and 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 things to run regardless of if you're going up or down, you know, by kind of relatively relatively small numbers of of students. So that becomes a difficult thing. It's not, it's not 100% scalable to the exact number of people who are in your system at any one time, which makes it just a difficult proposition to be in this situation every couple of years of of trying to figure out, you know, how is the budget going to support us or not? I know that over the next couple of weeks, Michelle and her team will be calculating what I gave you in your in your paperwork and for Lisa and Shan's knowledge, what I put in here, this is just back of the napkin calculations. If we're talking about a 7% biennial increase over 9.3, that would be more like 9.951 billion. There are some indications that COSA and others might be trying to pitch 10.2. Again, that's all super, super preliminary, but just so you know, as as usual, there's going to be a kind of a big chasm between what they think should be good for us and what most of us, especially us larger districts, actually need to meet our actual service level. So and another thing that Michelle and her folks are going to do, and I welcome her chiming in as well, is how can we build in some measure of predictability to our budgeting from biennium to biennium that doesn't have us just kind of waiting on the mechanisms of the legislative session and, you know, how how close are we getting to June when we have to have a budget adopted? Before we actually know what the allocation is going to be. So are there ways to tie off certain allocations to K-12 to more inflationary factors or or just other calculations that might at least allow us to predict that from from year to year and from biennium to biennium? Of course, we, I think it's probably given that we're going to want to advocate for full funding of the student investment account and Measure 98. Those things are kind of critical, especially in times of shrinking budgets. Granted, those items are targeted and they come with their own kind of strings, for lack of a better word, and accountability. However, they are very useful to us and we certainly would like to see those continued. One of the things we might want to consider is, you know, the pandemic has been extremely difficult on our students. We just had a statewide data release that came out and my colleague Audrey will be talking to you about that next, but you know, we certainly have seen some achievement declines for a multitude of reasons. While we may have declining student enrollment, I think what we see is a student body that needs us so much right now. And so, you know, the inputs of staff and system that we might need to put towards the kids that we have to, you know, shore them up and accelerate them, but you know, the needs are great. And so perhaps focusing on certain elements of that and tying off some of our our funding asks to to specific investments that, you know, could be could be evaluated through data and research. That might be a way that we can make up some of the shortfall that we anticipate seeing in the state school fund allocation. So I'll stop talking for a minute so you guys can start chiming in if you'd like.
I don't, I don't know if it's a chime in, but on the greater across Oregon, that is consistent. Unfortunately, that same scenario is now hitting the Department of Human Services, which hits all of our children, right? So there, in effect, we are trying to prepare for that same thing. My purpose in bringing that up is so that we understand that we are not the only ones on the chopping block. This impact that is happening with that many children down, there's also a decrease in children that are in foster care. Maybe people don't realize that, but finally we've gotten there. My point in bringing this together is to help you understand that this is happening properly. And everyone is preparing for this new legislation. The POPs are in now, the policy outcome packages have been submitted now. And and now it's up to whatever is going to happen between now and the election and then with the new this whole new crew comes in, then we've got a new governor and that's going to make a difference as well. So the only thing we can do is to look at what we have and decide what Plan B and Plan C are. Because anything that happens between now and then, and I just think it's it's incumbent upon us to be prepared for both the reduction in funds by some crazy I don't want to say not crazy, that's not a good word. Inequitable formula, let's say that, because that's exactly what they're doing with all the other agencies as well. There's these projected, you know, they have a they have a formula and then that's how they give you the money and they're like, wait, and then they could take it back. So I I know we're looking for ways to anticipate that and what could happen, but it's extremely difficult. It's it just is. It's extremely difficult and we're not able to do it effectively with the same people and the same agency and all of our families are the children that we're talking about right now. It's the same thing. It's very disappointing, quite frankly, from a governmental point of view, that they allow formulas and that type of thing that are may or may not be accurate, but that's how they apportion funds. We've been on the not receiving end, the not positive receiving end for quite some time, and it doesn't apply to the given fact. Because if that were the case, he'd have more money, the bus drivers would have more money, the teachers would have more money, everybody would have more of what they needed and that doesn't happen. Here, don't know why, but sorry, I had to say.
Anybody want to do a constitutional amendment to Oregon to take our education from this part? It's always a dream, but back to reality, I was thinking about number three, sub bullet, or actually number the second sub bullet that you have about looking at some measures of predictability and stability. Is that more an internal like thing for us, not really an external thing that we're trying to advocate for them, but more for us to figure out?
No, there's a couple of different angles to to work in terms of state school fund stability. So you could look somehow hinge it to the economic performance of the state. So and I like, for example, a three biennial average CPI increase, if that were like a low wing thing, we could use a set of minimum requirement for state school fund. There are other statewide systems that assumptions are made around salary and cost projections. For example, the first system, statewide pension benefit system assumes a 3.4% annual increase. And why, why, when it comes to us, why are we so different that way? So there's also the workforce. There's also the workforce stability, recruitment retention, there's a work group going around that and. Um, I think from a. College students perspective, when you're thinking about education as a career and you're seeing layoffs. Every other year, pretty significantly in the news, and there's a potential of you being last hired and first fired. Um, I feel like there are um a couple of different angles to when you talk about stability. Because um from most legislators' perspective, our system does look pretty. Pretty full of cash right now. Um, and that CSL, our actual service level argument, it's going to be really difficult. To get legislators behind that when it's different for each school district, so really focusing, thinking that on on the stability. Um, I'm not quite sure how to get that worked on yet, I think this is a really great time to try to move that forward.
That 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 makes it more clear for me on what we're talking about. I think the other point, um, a couple of points I wanted to also bring up was. The, it's true that we're going to have a very potentially different and new body. And so, as you all know, we don't have a lobbyist for us, so it's incumbent upon us as school board members and student reps. To advocate for our needs with our state legislatures and um. On October nineteen, OSBA is having a legislative roadshow at the Northwest Regional ESD. And you all should have received an email, um, but they're also looking to figure out and marks on the legislative policy committee as I am, as am I. But we're asking also as a region, in our region with our school district, what do we want OSBA to advocate for us? At the legislature and. And then they're going to develop their priorities as well that are statewide, so some of the things might be. This overlapping, but then we also have our own things that we might, because of the size of our district or specific need. That we need to engage with our um representatives, so it's. Going to be a pretty crazy time next year around this work.
CSL, for what it's worth, in our region, I know that there's smaller districts in our region too, banks, whatever, but for no student in our region is CSL accurate. Zero students in our region, there probably are some, maybe in Southern Oregon or Eastern Oregon where CSL is accurate. Prediction of what their current service level is, but for now, a single student Washington County, it's CSL an accurate prediction.
So, you you have your.
Yeah, thank you. No, I I appreciate um Beth you pointing out the fact that we're going to have so many potentially new legislators in. Office, because I feel like es- especially, you know, I've only been. On here for for about four years now, but even dating way back to Lisa's time, or even people who have come before any of us. Um, I think that. We get so used to repeating the same thing over and over again and feeling like it's it's, you know, we're we're not being heard, but I think that the. Opportunity that we have, especially in this upcoming year with with so many new potential faces. Um, this may be the first time that they're hearing about this, and so I mean, I echo Erica's remarks of of how important it's going to be for. Our board specifically to um to engage in that advocacy work. Um, I don't have the the paper that that Beth had drafted in front of me, but even looking back at the twenty twenty one legislative priorities, I mean, it's. Many of these still stand true even today, um, and, you know, I mean, I I am all for. Um, prioritizing the the things that Beth had mentioned in in this meeting, um, you know, I would imagine, you know. Looking back from twenty twenty one legislative priorities, you know, providing for students COVID recovery, you know, that. I'm sure can go very much hand in hand with with some of the learning. Um, that was lost and, you know, all of the supports that that we would want to maintain. Some of the programs, like the summer school programs, and maybe that can be more of the targeted funding that we're asking for. Um, but, you know, just as much as we can to to. To get back the learning that we lost as well as to to provide for our our current service level and um. Yeah, it's it's. It's unfortunate that. Our. Funding model is the way that it is, um, but I think that that. Then should empower us more and more to to get out there and um and to really advocate for our students.
To to your point, Sharon and Mark. When when people talk about current surface level level, it scares me. Because current service level means that we're operating at a level where the children just came out. The worst thing that anybody's ever encountered in an entire generation of people. The worst time for teachers, the worst time for everybody, and that's your current service level, that's not a good look. But, I I can tell you, this this funding, these very unique funding models are all over the place, it's the same. Funding model that says that, oh, by the way, congratulations, you just reduced the number of kids in foster care, and we're going to take away your staff and your money too. How does this work? And I just, and when do we get to say to these people, I get what you're trying to do, but you're not helping us help? We're exposing ourselves. And we could turn into these types of wards that ends up getting taken over by a whole different. Point of view, just because. We can't figure out how to make the money work and we can't, we can't get the legislation. I just, that is my greatest fear for this district, I don't want to see us turn into. Giving away half our money to charters or whatever the case is, because that's what people are going after, that's what they're thinking. And it's. Maybe that's just a. A unique thing for Oregon, I apologize, maybe I haven't been here long enough. I don't know. I've just never seen anything like this, we just don't seem to get what we need and everybody seems to be okay with it.
Yeah, I think that what you're getting at is the root of the problem is our funding mechanism, that people. Think it's uh how, you know, what you're doing, and they, they think they're going to solve the problem, and then they get here and they figure out. Who's been struggling for this problem for a couple of years, decades, you know, and then, and so. Here we are again, and no matter if you change the floor, you're still going to have the same problem.
I was going to be on a slightly different subject, are we finished?
Selective.
But, uh, so, something that a constituent raised with me, I've been thinking about looking into, that I. Am interested in advocating for is. Most everyone here up here knows that uh during the pandemic, the federal government provided funds for universal free school meals. And that ended, um, and so a number of states have, I mean, estate funding and passed universal free school. Meals, California did first, and then Maine, a few other states have done so now, and. Um, the NYU Center on School Equity has done some preliminary research on the effects of that, they're finding that. That's a very, been a very positive. Policy because sometimes students who would qualify for. Uh, free meals because of their income level are missed in direct certification or there are language barriers. And so they found that these states that have just in the past year stepped in to extend uh the. Uh, the universal program that there's, that they've seen a huge upside, that they would recommend that as a best practice, and so. I think that's something our station seriously study and consider since other states are currently implementing that.
It really takes away the stigma of free lunch, like that, like the self-worth of a student goes up dramatically when everybody gets free lunch and they're not free lunch.
You know, we appreciate that um. Like the Supreme Court Justice said a long time ago, the states are the laboratories of democracy, and so we we're very proud of Oregon. I think, you know, living in Oregon, well, I certainly am, but I think when we see other states doing things that. Researchers are saying, the early results are having good effects, we should then state seriously look at that.
Thank you, Beth, I wanted to add another contender for the country priority, at least for our district, which is for being at our um. Like our CTE programs and I think when we're thinking about attracting. Students back, especially if we've lost students. Those programs or programs where parents can see their students, there's new opportunities for apprenticeship, internships. Are very um. Desired and also um, you know, it's giving a a, it's giving help to our students, they're going to get. They're putting in the workforce or in education, whatever path it choose, but I think they're really attractive, and so I don't know if there's special. If there's anything um that we can look at, and I know we just did the holy. Um, certification program, and I mean, I think that's great, I think how do we expand those opportunities?
It almost, I mean, I don't know, Travis may like freak out if I say this, but as you were talking, what was immediately coming to mind was, you know. Is there a capability for almost like a non-competitive grant program, where if you're a district that's moving and shaking and ready. To implement new programs, could you access pockets of money that sit outside of measure ninety eight, for example, that are really for districts that are ready to roll? Or is it, oh, it's not a formula funding, like you're going to get this per student, but if you're ready to rock with a new CTE program, grab this, get it going. Or can that, when you come from like a workforce development side versus an education side? Yeah.
Yeah, measure ninety eight doesn't really get everybody all, yeah, uh, like that, I think Lisa would end up.
Okay, I I just, I have a couple of things, um, the first is, I don't think it needs to be its own. Priority, but I think within our our funding priority and those conversations we're going to be having. Since there will be potentially so many new folks, it might not be a bad idea for us to work QEM into that conversation. We're a long way from that, of course, and that's uh unlikely right now, but. Making sure they know what the quality education model is and how long we were supposed to. You know, be funding schools at inadequate, you know. Rate and all that kind of stuff, it might be good history for them, um, and so they kind of have a goalpost um to kind of speak to Nancy's point of, you know. CSL really being the floor of um just sort of barely serving the needs of students across the state. Um, so that's, that's the first thing, and then the second thing, I I just want to speak to uh Patrick's suggestion, which I. Agree with and and love the idea of universal free school lunch, but I. Am reluctant to support it uh in Salem as a legislative priority, just because I've I've seen cycle after cycle. To them, right, the the pot of money is um not just finite, but our section. Is finite, so if they pull out a bucket and say, oh, we'll fund universal, you know, free meals in schools. That means that we'll have to scale back everything else that we do even more, because we're going to be the ones that they take that from. Uh, and I wonder uh if that might not be something to kind of broach with Congresswoman Bonamici's office, if she would get on board with trying to. Increase that federally, I I and I'm not saying that, like, you know, everybody else loves the idea for Salem, I'd been, fine, I like free lunch too. Um, for our kids, but um that was just a wondering I had.
Just worried about taking it away from somewhere else.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might be a federal advocacy instead of a state. Like, I also had to get the question on like our progress for process for engagement, I know we usually come up with this and then send this out to. Legislators, but with the potential of like a lot of change. Is there an opportunity for us to actually do more, and now that we're back in person, more of an opportunity to network and connect with them? And present this and invite them to our space?
Well, we many years ago did. This that I'm about to say, and we haven't done it in a long time, but if you guys want to jumpstart it, we can certainly do it, which is that we invited. Legislators who represent our districts, attendance area, we invited them here for basically a legislative summit of our own. Um, I think we got away from that because it does become hard to schedule with them as they're in those. Last couple of weeks heading up to the session, and it seems like the ESD has hosted more broad-scale things, so we weren't sure maybe if that. Had as much relevance, but that's certainly something we could do if we wanted to.
I would expect legislative summit from OSBA at the ESD in January, right before session starts. And get in their time after that will be tough.
Right.
They'd be racing back up Salem, yeah, yeah.
Erica, we used to do that, we used to have a legislative breakfast for years, and we we just had it down on the board. And then when the ESD started convening that, that kind of fell away. So, I mean, we we can get the drive if. No guarantees on how many people would commit.
Oh, yeah, you have to have conversations about their interest level, right, like, we all, we all have relationships with many legislators in our district, so. It'd be easy for us to sort of. I I think they're all probably campaigning right now, but um. You know, after November eight, 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 right? Gosh, I should know that. Yes, Lisa, QEM was on my notes too, uh, so the quality education report. Said the last biennium should have been funded at eleven point one billion, it was funded at nine point. So, for those of you who have not been on the board very long, uh. The Constitution Amendment says you will fund education to the level of the quality education model. Or write a report saying why you don't, and ever since that Constitution Amendment went in, they've written a report saying why you don't.
I think that's such an important point that you raised, that it is constitutionally required, because I think it's easy for people to say. QEM, that's kind of ridiculous, and why would we keep talking about it, it's never going to happen, it's like.
It's a constitutional.
It's a constitutional amendment in Oregon, like, we don't just do it for funsies, like, this is something that was. Requested as a research-based platform for what would it take to adequately fund education, so. I mean, from that standpoint, at least to couch it in that history, it's it's worthwhile sharing with people.
Especially with new legislators, I feel like hitting that is fine, and and I don't want to.
Maybe not belabor it, but at least like give the reminder of review.
Yeah, and on the legislative front, yes, stable economic funding is something we've been talking about forever. But if there's thirty new ones, many of them haven't heard us talk about that, even though we feel like we've been talking about forever. There's going to be plenty of legislators who have never heard us talk about that. Um, so I don't want to lose sight of that, and I I think the stable part. Comes from some systemic changes that there's no way we can even afford, right, that like. The way Oregon's revenue system works, that during boom times, we do better than the rest of the country, and during bust times. We do way worse than the rest of the country, I think many of us would love to see us smooth out one of those peaks and valleys. Still probably have peaks and valleys, but not be as high, high and low, low, because the low lows just kill us. But that's, you know, a state sales tax or some other form of revenue.
Picking reform.
Not yet.
Who wants to tackle that?
The biggest kicker in history is what's going to mean we have a, so that's the other thing I called up, was latest budget formula. A billion dollars short in the next biennium, one point three in the next biennium after that, so. The revenue forecast is not great, and that's in large part because the biggest kicker ever in history, three. Only, the purple one's different, but yes. Three point four six billion in personal kicker, so. Um, yeah, so the the stability part. I don't know how much influence we can have over that, except to continue bringing it up that maybe we should look at the, look differently at the way Oregon. Funds the government. Not really our purview. I I know it's not October first, but we're pretty close, and October first was a mile post that had been set. For my expectations, so how many students we may have gotten back? Do we know what student loss looks like, I don't quite know, I'll just say why, for what, like, do we have an idea roughly of what we're looking at in our district?
We've gained from May.
Good.
And we're still down about seventy kids from projections.
That's all? Projections.
And when we project, we basically roll everybody up and then make an assumption about Kinder, and I think there might be some other assumptions built in there. Um, but.
So, we're nineteen thousand kids, that feels pretty good.
That's pretty good, yeah.
I I thought you were going to say thousands.
So, the interesting thing about these numbers, when when you get the enrollment report in October. You'll see that we're down from October to October, we're up from May to October. Oh, because. So, we started at a high water mark.
I don't want to get ahead of ourselves in the agenda, but all the standardized testing was in May at the worst. Can't have it come along, right, so more to come.
Yeah, and wonderful segue, I would love to.
So statewide, right, so we're not really that different, right, our ADMW or whatever is not going to be. Much different than what we expected, is that an anomaly, so I have to say, you know, the. Side of me that owned a business and said, don't spend more money than you have, wonders, why wouldn't it be cheaper to educate twenty thousand fewer students?
Then, just a simple answer is, the impact of these last couple of years is really significant on our students.
That's all the COVID extra funding we've received, right?
That'll expire.
One-time funding, that will expire, but that's not, that's not accounted for in the state revenue formula, that's not accounted for in the SIA.
But the the impact on the students.
Yeah. Um, can we expect your award-winning chart of how much we have to take from the SIA? To make up for budgetary state school funding, so for what it's worth, right? to make up for budgetary state school funding? So, for what it's worth, right, like all of us understand what those who've been here for a little bit probably understand that uh we're not likely in a cuts budget scenario unless the state is indeed down one point three billion next year, but uh for next biennium, what we've done, what most districts have done, have used a student investment account funding to sort of offset the shortfall that we've gotten from the state general fund, which means we're likely not targeting uh as effectively the improvements that the legislature was hoping for with that student investment account. So those were supposed to be somewhat targeted funds. We are using them completely appropriately, but we are also having a backfill for the shortfall from the state general fund from that state education plan, right? So, so we're not in a cuts budget yet. We don't, I know you mentioned maybe news of layoffs of teachers. We haven't laid any teachers off in a very long time. Correct, right? So I mean, uh, the liability of your job in Hillsborough is pretty good.
We haven't had to lay people off because we're large enough to adjust through attrition.
Right. Yeah, it, but in the cuts years, we weren't. We did lay people off, right?
Yeah.
Two thousand and three, we cut thirteen days of school, right? So I mean, we've had
Seventeen.
Seventeen, alright. Yeah, so we've had some pretty dark times. Yes, exactly. Um, but it's been a minute since we've actually had a picture about layoffs.
Yeah.
Um, and a lot of that is due to the student investment account, right? Being able to help us offset the the shortfalls in our general fund. Um, I don't love that we have to do that, so I I don't mind the idea of bringing that up again. Um, so uh on the non-budgetary, I could go on the budgetary front for a very long time.
But let me ask you this.
No, I love this subject.
Let me ask you this about the, from the budgetary perspective, will the S I A, will that help us with this? I don't know of literally correct way to describe it, this low of the children because of the impact, because of COVID. Do we know what that amount should be and can S I A work it out? Can it help us to be more neat? Because I feel that what I'm hearing is that it costs more. It takes more resources to help put the students out of the doldrum that we call COVID. It's gonna cost more. It's gonna cost us more. It's gonna take more resources. We have to pull them up. We have to bring them up. Is there enough that I'm gonna do?
There's not gonna be additional S I A funding, so right now it is supporting current service level. The the changes we've made from our general fund budget have been absorbed by two-thirds of our S I A grants. So they, we we begin repurposing. What we have done is a multi-year plan for our federal Esther dollars that is really focused on supplemental service for the students and not long-term staffing changes. So that that will all come as part of our regular budget development cycle, but um first step, of course, was getting our enrollment numbers, because that does drive a big part of our budget, and then um least solid estimates for costs. So this this month was our first payroll, regular payroll in a year, so we can start dialing in on that and be bringing the projections forward after that.
And we're using our one-time Esther funds to achieve those goals.
Right.
But COVID recovery the best we can, and they're not gone yet, right?
We've we've peanut buttered them, so we've we've put them out over the full year of the the term. Um, so through September thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, we should have them there.
Yeah.
So it's really the second year of the twenty-three, twenty-five biennium that could get real dicey for us.
Yes, very much could. Well, more like the yes, the second year of this might be twenty-five, yes, is where the revenue forecast, they do assume a mild recession beginning at the beginning of the calendar year twenty twenty-three. We may already be in it. But, yeah, and the kicker is just unbelievable. Um, on the non-budgetary, I know most of our stuff tends to be that. Uh, is there interest in this board uh for the requirement to have school board receive some type of training? I think there was uh some resistance to that in the past two sessions, but I believe uh it may be a bipartisan effort this year, because I think some of the toxicity clearly is me taking out um. Uh, so, you know, I I think you can, in a nonpartisan way, have people understand what their job as school board members are. Um, so I I would be in favor of advocating for the bill that when it comes up, so I mean, is it do we have a sense of in this room, like, do we think that school board should be required to have some training? School board members should, new school board membership should be required, or existing ones? Is that a thing we wanna advocate for or no? I would be okay with it.
And that is a potential COSA priority, and I think we'll it's the first bullet point in the lower section. So um I will, I will work to get some additional information um because that'd probably be helpful for the rest of the board before making a determination on that maybe. But next time we talk about this, definitely I can bring more into it.
Uh, I know there was a a representative who also served on school board member in a rural district who uh advocated fiercely to shut it down in the last session, and I believe that representative is working cooperatively to craft the bill in a way that would eliminate his opposition. I think I said that as bad as that.
That was pretty good.
Like I did alright then. Yeah, alright. Alright, uh, anything else for you to move on? Alright, our next item, we pre-looked it a little bit during this conversation at Dodger, right?
Yeah, it is. The statewide is, that's fine. Um, for Nick, we'll pop to the next slide. Um, I can just, as you know, publicly, our data went out on Thursday, and it's kind of hit the news. There's there's been lots of requests for um this information about that, and so I wanted to make sure that you guys had some key points about um statewide assessment and everything that um went out. Um, I think what I just put up here is just some of the information that O D E and what that we also believe, I mean, some of the tests, just a reminder, it's one point in time for kids, and I do wanna highlight, I put it on my next slide. Um, and I think Mark actually already alluded to it. We took statewide assessment in the month of May um during probably the most challenging time of uh staff attendance, student attendance. Um, just a really stress on our system. Um, I was, when I, I actually went back to look at, at any given day, we had anywhere from ten to seventeen percent of our staff out during April and May, um as well as students. So it just really was a challenging time to get statewide assessment. That being said, it does um give us trends and it gives us data for our district overall. Um, what we saw and what came out of it is not surprising um for us. It's something that we've been kind of prepared for, and everything that we've been doing through Esther funding, summer school, the things that we've done to support our students have really um addressed some of those issues and will continue to do so. So just again, uh cautions for interpretation that kind of show up on this next slide here is our participation rates at the high school were so low. Um, it really doesn't support a comparison statistically, so um we probably had um the most opt-outs at high school that we've ever had before. We normally have in a given year four hundred opt-outs. I think this last year we had a total of nine hundred with a bulk of them occurring at high school and at eighth grade. So just to let you know. Uh, our economically disadvantaged student group also, um that program expanded, so those two comparison groups are a little different than they haven't been in the past. And I think really just um I think that the assessment, again, is informational, but underscores kind of the need that we've been talking about that students have coming out of the pandemic. So, um, there's so much that needs to be done for mental health, just their wellbeing, accelerating our learning, and just other crucial programs that we use as a district to support our students. Um, and this was done a while ago, but I think we've talked about it before with graduation rates. Um, we are one of the top four districts in the state that has an index impact index number that is um higher. We're the top four, basically, but basically talks about um students that are highly mobile, students that are economically disadvantaged, students that have been ever language learners. Again, we're one of the top four, so that are impacted by by groups um of our students and that. So we we do a lot for our kids. And um we do that because we love them and we want to do what's best for them to have that successful time in our system. So I think just keeping all of that in mind as we look at this data. I'm gonna have bad pass out cards because I think I have seven minutes left to present this. So, and I suspect you'll have questions, and I'll try to go as fast as I can, but I also wanted to give you cards to just write down questions, because I'm happy to answer those in like a board update, because I think we may have some, but I'm just worried that it's fine. So I'm gonna try to go through this, and then we'll leave whatever time we can, but if I don't get to your question, write it down. I'm happy to take it and and get you an answer.
Then that'd be six forty-five. It could be six fifty.
Okay, so I'll talk a little less. Okay, uh, if we could go ahead and just pop to the next slide. So here's our participant uh participation rate um for this last year. Um, the federal target is ninety-four point five, uh ninety-four point five percent, and here's where uh the green column is where H S D fell in terms of our participation. Um, it it highlighted green as well, because that is also where we were above the state average in participation. So just I'm just gonna kind of highlight that. And you can see at eleventh grade, it was um sixty-four point five percent is what our high school students participated in E L A, and at sixty-two point two percent for math and sixty-nine point five percent. So again, that's definitely um off in the past, we have been um at the participation rate of ninety-four point five, so that was definitely a um new new trend in our data. And again, you can see the other levels, definitely an increase in opt-outs across the board. Okay, we can pop to the next slide. Here's our overall achievement for twenty-one, twenty-two. So what I put on this column, so the first column is our overall, all of our third graders that took the assessment. They passed at a rate of thirty-six point two percent. Um, as compared to the state overall was thirty-nine point four um for E L A and in math, you can see for third graders, thirty-seven point seven, the state overall was thirty-nine point four. So that's how you read that column down. Um, where we've highlighted green is where we were um above the state um average of passing and meeting. Um, I kind of attribute fifth and sixth grade had a little more stability in their education. If you think about it, our third graders had two years of um interesting, you know, or three years really of interesting, when you kindergarten that ended sooner to some extent, um, you're a C D L as well as the challenging year. Um, so I think just um wanted to point that I feel like fifth and sixth grade, again, had a little bit more of a solid foundation going into the pandemic. And I think they were able to stay like that. Seventh and eighth grade and eleventh grade, again, is where we saw an increase in opt-outs, so I think that does start to skew our numbers. So, does that chart make sense? And did Rose give you this chart? I think it's perfect. Okay. Alright, let's go to the next one. Um, also wanted to give you just a comparison of pre-pandemic and then last year um in a side-by-side comparison. Um, again, I would put an asterisk on eleventh grade. I don't think you can really statistically count that one, just the number of level of opt-outs um overall. Um, if you look at the all data, really, um the overall drop on average was about ten percent, ten to eleven percent. Um, as I started to go through this data, I thought about um taking a look at the schools that have an impact in that, or districts that have an impact in that that are similar to ours and how they they fell, or maybe they went up in their data, but as I looked, dove into it, um we see that those districts also fell roughly ten to twelve percent as well. And then um just because I'm also also curious, more affluent school district, I took took a look at their data as well. And actually, in some of their data, you see like an eleven to fifteen percent drop in either math or E L A for some of our more affluent districts as well. So the drop existed for everyone. Um, it it wasn't just Hillsborough. So um I think that's just important to to note as well. Um, and again, on average, anywhere from ten to eleven percent seems to be kind of a trend in our our data overall. Okay, pop to the next slide. This is the achievement by groups. So this is all um students that may identify in these categories as they were assessed. So on this chart, I um we play eighteen, nineteen, where we were pre-pandemic, um twenty-one, twenty-two, so just this last year, and then a comparison to the state. The ones that are green are the ones where we were above the state for this year in um our passing rate. You can kind of see a little bit of a comparison by group. Um, our students with I E Ps um did go above the state. Their drop wasn't as um large as some of our other groups. Um, we've definitely saw a drop in our um Hispanic and Latino category. Economically disadvantaged um actually saw an increase, but I think that also is because the way the category, um if you again, I shared earlier, they changed how that economically disadvantaged category is grouped now, so it looks a little bit different. Our language learners um definitely saw a decrease than concerning these parts. If we pop to the next slide, um, I think looking ahead, um I think we knew this data was going to be um tough. Um, I think what is um pretty amazing about our district is um it really confirms the focus area work that I talked about at the retreat for our schools and what we're going to be working on. Um, particularly around math and literacy in elementary school, looking at language scaffolds and supports for students K twelve to be able to better access core um language development um for our students that are language learners, and really just connecting back to student engagement. I think one of the things that our district does an amazing job of is knowing students by name, strength, and need. And for two years, we didn't get that opportunity in the same way that we have built relationships with kids and connected with kids and built relationships with families and and worked side by side. We can't do that over the screen in the same way, and I don't think state assessment shows you that. Um, and so I think really just um being able to see the kids, and even what we're seeing right now in September, just being so much more not relaxed, but it feels like school and it doesn't have that level of stress that has been on it. It's, there's still stress, there's still things that happen, but it, but it's different and it feels better. Um, I think um moving forward, I think it confirms our need for after-school supports that we've been working on. Um, summer school, I can't remember who brought that up. I think that confirms our need to continue our robust summer school program for our students. Um, I think challenges that we're going to face, we have areas that we need to focus on and support our staff. We still are short in substitute, and so being able to give the supports to staff without having substitutes to be able to give them that P D that they need, or curriculum work that they need, or intervention training that they may need, that is the challenge. And then we're beginning to kind of really rethink what we need to do to support our staff without putting a strain on the system with substitutes. I think that will continue to be a challenge for us this year. Um, I think, again, I just wanna honor the fact that our students thrive on relationships and the impacts that they have outside of our our buildings. It's just huge, and I don't think the statewide assessment necessarily tells the whole story, but it definitely tells a piece. And I really feel like we're doing some great things to really tackle what um with those last two years. I am happy to answer any question in like the thirty minutes I have left. But you can also totally write questions down, and I will happily take your green card.
The one question I wrote down, well, I have two, but um and first slide, what is the definition of participation rate? I thought that was an interesting term.
They took the test.
Oh, okay. Alright.
I'm so sorry.
Don't get it. What do you mean they?
Yeah, they took the test. They um
Took the test.
They took the test.
We watched ninety-four percent high school or ninety-six percent high school to sixty-two.
That's okay. And then the second question was about from the student achievement slide, the data, um define opt-out.
Didn't dig.
They didn't take the test. Um, there's a form that is policy. They took, yeah, they took, they filled it out and said, I'm not taking, then their parents typically fill that out.
That's the option. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Also, just nationwide, like Nate testing, if you have read anything about that, it is, yeah, it's the lowest in math that it's ever been since like nineteen ninety-nine, and I believe for literacy, it's below it's ever been since like two thousand and four or two thousand and three. So I mean, it's it's hit nationwide, so.
I definitely see a trend in people helping out more and more. So one other data set that's going to be used to actually have an accurate picture of what's happening in our district with our students. And the other question that I would like to hear back, maybe as a follow-up to our board, is what actionable and targeted investment are we playing in the category where we see the student group across all areas have lower performance? Like, I would like to see like what is, what is going to happen? Not, not more like, you're, you know, I know like we're gonna invest in the relationship, but actually like what is the task, what is it gonna be different?
What was the first question?
The trend is they're not they can't, so like what data can actually
Yeah, okay, first question. And so with that one, what we um mid, mid-pandemic, we also shifted criticisms, but we do have um data that we use um around running records, which I think um at the elementary level is something that we need to start using um and being another data set. We take it twice a year, so it allows us to open open students as well. And uh we um, again, making the shift from a different investment that we used before, and then shifting to this one after this next year, we'll have a better data set to be able to track that in a more meaningful way, and we've been able to put it into synergy now, so we can pull that a little bit easier. Um, we were having some spreadsheets and doing it in a different way. Um, we start assessment for um math, so that is a piece that we'll be able to pull as well. And then at the middle And then at the middle school level, we have shifted to using math, which is a growth assessment, um, as we've moved into, um, just focusing more on middle school. And that was part of the seventh grade day. So, um, that data was, um, challenging last year. They also took it in the spring, so the comparison data was really hard to look at. So I'm hoping this year being a more stable year, we'll have data that we can look at the start of the year and the end of the year and really know what our, our students learned over that first year. That means we're getting back to those on track data, um, components. Um, graduation rates are obviously going to be important for us and which the worst students are falling in all of those areas with, um, credits and, um, credit attainment and all of those. So these are kind of the big data sets that we're gonna focus on and use to do our stuff.
So this is just one, but especially for the more numbers, we're only seeing this.
Yeah.
So many students are opting out that ends up with you, the agenda of you, like, for a picture. Children, you wanna know like where we're investing? I wonder if it's the right area.
He says, you're what?
No, sorry, I was talking to my daughter. She was talking to me.
Maybe also.
And then there's also English home. Um, you can see the math in a stack, um, English, Spanish, the reading, the literacy is English only, yes. And we have assessments that we also do in native language, prefer to English.
Couple of questions. I just say, real appreciate that. I really appreciate what Erica was saying about, um, as much as we can getting specific, um, action items that we're, that we're doing. Um, something I hear sometimes from folks is that we have a lot of, and I said this before and I'll probably say it again, so I don't wanna be a broken record, but we have a lot of high level, like our strategic planning, very granular detail that for a lot of people often public, they may not have the time to fully dig into. Um, but they, they like, there's some sort of top level, very specific detail. We, we feel like we're very concerned coming out of COVID as a school district. So these are the specific steps we're taking. These are the short summary bullet points of why we're taking them and why we expect to have an impact. I think that is, is really good for us to be communicating so people know this is what's happening, that's why.
I would go ahead. Okay, so now that we have the data that shows that which, which demographic are testing, which ones are taking it and which ones are passing. Um, that reminds me of the few days that we had for our class to, um, prepare for the standardized, uh, the assessment and then take it. Um, I noticed in the graph that the most, uh, most performing students were, uh, English learners. So that really reminded me that the standardized test is, uh, is not only on how well you know the curriculum, but also how well you can read English primarily. So I was wondering if we had any accessibility to, um, talk to people who make standardized tests and say, what can we do to, uh, ensure that students who are English learners, students of IEPs can be as successful as they can?
That's a great question. I think there's great debate about standardized assessments and who it serves best. Um, and I think, um, we try to offer all, there's universal supports and then there's accommodations that happen within all, um, of our statewide assessments. And we try to do as many as we can, um, like I'm sharing there for the math side of it, like there's a stack test for English that also has English and Spanish in it. There's extra time. We also have, um, for students that are on IEPs, there's different accommodations that we do, um, given. Some of them do have it read to them, um, and we can do the same for many of our students that need that accommodation. So we, we go through and individually, um, select what works best for students and what they are used to in their classroom setting as well. But I, I think you bring up a good point around standardized assessments and the challenges that it does, that it does bring.
Back to your legislators. Um, I, I think it'll also be good maybe to have as a resource, all the assessments that we do throughout the year so that when you do see one, it's not like, oh, this is the one and only. But there's other ones that happen and I know that I will bring them.
I have a real handy dandy chart with like colors that they, that Gina McLean has made for us or amazing elementary.
It's also, it's also, I will say to our students, um, as a parent of a child who is an IEP, you can advocate to make sure that all of those are addressed. So for example, the IEP that my son has, we, it does include the accommodations that they would make for, um, a standardized test. So I, I choose not to opt him out of those tests, but to simply engage in the accommodation for him, which is when people start fidgeting and talking to themselves, he gets up and goes to quiet. Okay, and then he does not. So it's, it's, so the IEP itself is actually governed by, the, the parent comes in and advocates on behalf of the child, say, this is what we need. And so we work together. So the, the, the district doesn't control that as much as the parent and the child and the counselor and the teacher. Everybody works together on that. Does that make sense?
So a few things, uh, we knew student achievement will be done nationwide, statewide, our community, of course. The one comparing us to the rest of the state, I would say if people had been around here for a while, are pretty used to us doing better than the state. So I don't want to spend forever wondering why, why the house on fire, we didn't put it out as well as everybody else did. But there might be a little bit of reflection on this slide. Hillsborough usually does better than the state and we didn't really. So while everybody was down, yeah, we were down a little more. So I don't love that.
I think what I would go back on that one is just our, um, index impact of the students that we serve. And if you think about who was disproportionately impacted by the pandemic itself, I think we serve a lot of, a lot of those students. And, um, and I think when we're, you know, the top four on that index, eh, that, and I think that's gonna have a bigger impact on our scores. I, I saw the same thing, but then I also thought about like who, who was most impacted by the pandemic in these last two years. And I think that really did make a larger impact for, for us. And I think, um, it's.
We're also pretty used to overcoming those better than everybody else.
So here's one.
We sit on grad rates for them.
Yeah.
Here's one of the things that we think we learned about ourselves these last couple of years. We are very proud that we've always outachieved our impact index. And, um, and that we've always scored higher than the state, even though our demographics would suggest that we shouldn't be in that situation. And I think one of the things that we learned and we've talked about quite a bit is that we believe that oftentimes the reason we're able to outperform what would be expected of us is because of the relationship that we have with the student. And that oftentimes requires an adult sitting side by side with your kid and pulling him along. And these last couple of years, we just haven't really had, and, and that is, I mean, that, that tells us something about our system. Um, and to be honest, we don't know how to fix that yet. But if we think about all of the FTE that we had allocated towards credit recovery for grad coaches and how much of that work occurs in person, when you can actually track the student down and have that conversation. We, we just weren't able to do that to the same extent virtually that we are in person.
Right. And it's great that we have Rockstar and Superhero, but systematically you can't tell on Rockstar and Superhero, just for the system where everyone, they're right on. So.
In addition, I'd like to, I'd like to, well, you may be already thinking about this, but I want to make sure that this data, um, this, in my humble opinion, supports the need or the advocacy on our part to say, because you don't wanna cut this. You don't wanna cut more money. You don't wanna go below the current service level. You don't even wanna use it as a base. This is the reason why, and this is what we're looking at now, which is clear, nobody's looking at their current service. Nobody is, if everybody's down, then no, there is no current service level. That just, you can just open up the floor and let that fall away. But that's the kind of data that I'd go along with the ask when we're having a conversation about the money. Because if the answer is, you don't need that to cut down students, no, 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 let me show you what the students are that we can do that to serve right now. And this is what it is.
And I, I had just voiced Eric's comment of as, you know, whether rightly or wrongly, parents think, if my kid's doing fine, they don't need to take, they don't need the extra stress of the same by that, editor. Standardized testing has become the emphasis across the entire country. Yeah, finding other ways to measure how we're doing is gonna be important for us to figure out. I'm sure we don't need to invent a wheel. If somebody else has got a wheel, let's just do a wheel, right? So, I mean, we can learn from other districts that are trying to find ways to do that. Um, I don't know, we don't have time for, to answer this question, but I would like to sort of, in future meetings or whatever. I'm very cognizant of the kind of grid in which this was conducted, yeah, that, and toll filling classrooms, teachers, toll filling classrooms, students, opt outs across some great astonishing numbers. Uh, in casual conversations with teachers over the summer, just social conversation that Tuesday market or whatever. Um, when I'd ask them at Christmas or ask them at, you know, early, mid, that we all know the behavioral challenges were unbelievable. And although school district neighbor had to close a middle school for me because of disfires. Uh, and when I asked in summer again, you know, are we any better now? It wasn't better, it was not better, but different is what I heard. So a few weeks into the new year, I would love to sort of figure out, are, you know, what is our discipline environment? Are we, are, are we, are we normalizing a little bit to where it's not the one, almost the number one priority we have every day? Cause not me yet, but they're gonna have to take it ten again and then, right? We got time, but yeah. All right. Nobody else seem to have had any questions, other questions?
Questions on your head though, feel free to give them to me and I will take them and get you response with.
I will join our work session. We'll meet downstairs.
All right, I will convene our regular session of the Hillsborough School District. We'll begin our meeting as we always do with the flag salute. The flag has moved.
The flag, the United States of America. Invisible, the radio and justice law.
Thank you. As we gather here today, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge that our district service area is on the occupied traditional homelands of the Adfoli indigenous people, lands we now call Washington County and the state of Oregon. We honor the indigenous peoples' traditional and ancestral homelands we stand on. The Tualatin Kalapuya, the Kathlamet, Clackamas, Tomwater, Malala, bands of the Chinook and many other indigenous nations of the Columbia River. And remembering these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives and their ancestors. We also recognize the urban indigenous native first peoples community, living in the metro area, which includes over four hundred tribal nations. The Hillsborough School District is committed to the recognition and education regarding tribal and local history and working with our local tribes in partnership. Thank you. Uh, we have two proclamations today. Uh, it's like Nancy, you're first. For those of you participating online, the microphones sound really good in this room. How do they sound out there?
Sounds great.
Oh, excellent. Nice job today, folks.
Thank you. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that principals and assistant principals work tirelessly each day as visionaries, assessment experts, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special programs administrators and guardians of various legal contractual and policy mandates and initiatives. They also work collaboratively with both teachers and district staff to develop and maintain high curriculum standards, develop mission statements and set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence. The Hillsborough School District honors these exemplary principals and assistant principals who have succeeded in providing high quality learning opportunities for students as well as their outstanding contributions to the profession. The Hillsborough School District celebrates that Principal's Month gives an opportunity to honor and recognize the contribution of all school principals and assistant principals to the success of every student in the district. The Board of Directors of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the month of October, also my birthday, um, October twenty twenty two, National Principals Month. We urge all community members to join us and recognize the many contributions and achievements of principals and assistant principals to the development of prosperity of our community. I would also like to personally thank the principals of this district who kind of nudged me to actually stand up and say that I would try to run for this position. So thank you all very much and let's all welcome and say thank you to them, because we need them. Thank you.
All right. Director McGuire has the next one.
It's an honor to read this in recognition of our special duty to keep our students safe. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that a week in October has been designated to increase awareness of the importance of safe schools and that it is critical for schools and communities to work together to ensure that our children are safe from harm and able to thrive in their academic environment. The Hillsborough School District knows that excellence in education is dependent on safe, secure and peaceful school settings. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that all children deserve to learn in an environment where they feel safe and free from harm. The Hillsborough School District encourages schools, communities and organizations to work together to stop bullying and cyberbullying and put an end to hatred and racism by increasing awareness of the prevalence and impact of all forms of bullying on children of all ages. The Hillsborough School District believes that it is important to focus public attention on school safety and identify, develop and promote answers to these critical issues. And the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the week of October sixteenth through twenty second, twenty twenty two, be Safe Schools Week. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing that we must work together to make our schools safe, secure and peaceful places for learning, teaching and working.
Hi, thank you. Okay. Uh, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Ward that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection? Motion carries. Uh, would anybody like to move that we approve the consent agenda?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
It's that Lisa or she in? Lisa, okay. Uh, it's been moved, uh, by Director Ward and seconded by Director Allen that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection? All right, that motion carries. Uh, audience time next. Do we have any audience time today, Rose or Beth? All right, thank you. For those of you watching at home, come on down sometime. All right. First of all, action items is, uh, I would like to provide some context on that. Um, thanks to Director Allen for alerting me to this all those years ago when I first, uh, became a board member. Um, the Metro Policy Advisory Committee is a, uh, group of local government and citizen representatives that meet at Metro once or twice a month, uh, as Metro, you know, being a whole, another government entity that, uh, works collaboratively between the three county area, um, problems that cross county, um, lines like trash and transportation. Um, and a lot of other things too lately. Um, so that the Metro Policy Advisory Committee is made up of s- uh, citizens and elected officials from around the region, usually very specific, like the mayor of Hillsborough or one of the city councils is the ultimate. The mayor of Forest Grove, one city council, mayor of Clackamas, right? So it's usually mayor city council, uh, as part of the representation for that group. Um, all of the school districts in the metro region, so the twenty or so, twenty plus or so in the three counties have one representative that serves them on the Metro Policy Advisory Committee and learns about issues. And I've been fortunate enough to be that person for the last four or so years. Uh, with the destruction of my house on fire and the board chair responsibilities, uh, I am stepping back from my role on that committee and I, I am planning to be the alternate, if you guys would like to nominate me for such. Um, Director Greenberg in Beaverton has been nominated by her board. So, uh, Director Greenberg would be appointed to the MPAC, Metro Policy Advisory Committee if I think seventy percent of the boards approve it. So the issue before us tonight is to approve, um, the nomination. So I, I move that the Board of Directors approve the nomination of Susan Greenberg to serve on the Metro Policy Advisory Committee.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
So procedurally.
So procedurally, is this something where the person needs to be nominated uh, every so often or just until their successor is?
Uh, yeah, uh. Serving it uh, on the metro, on this particular metro has been interesting in that procedural context, yes. Normally just the person who was elected the mayor of Hillsborough is the next person to serve in that capacity. But with all the, it took their legal team quite a bit of time to figure out during my nomination and confirmation. And then again, because they were a different legal team, but yes, the, the procedure is for the person to serve for as long as they would like to serve or you know, until they're no longer elected, then they're not on the board anymore or the policy committee anymore. Um, if the person resigns or wants to make a change, like I am in this particular case, we, we notified all of the school boards in the metro region, the folks at Metro helped do that. Director Greenbrook stepped up, her board nominated her for the position. And now it's up to the other twenty or twenty-five boards to confirm or not. So um, I'm in favor of confirming Director Greenberg to take my place. Um, hence I made the motion so that yes, you, you pretty much stay on it.
It's not defined term.
It's not defined by term.
I guess my.
I think mostly because it's normally the mayor or city council or whatever, right? So I think, I think in some ways the, the legal folks at Metro could do a better job figuring out how, how school districts are unique in the way they are represented in this committee. But that would be a project for another day.
Oh, yeah, no, I um. From my experience talking to metro counselors, I think the advisory committee is a really important role because yeah, in years and decades past, metro council had been perceived by some as somewhat distant from the uh, municipalities. And so I think this advisory committee has given, they value that, that relationship that's built there. I just am curious, before I vote, yes, my uh, limited experience has been very positive with Director Greenberg. Um, I just am curious, do we know that there's not someone else from another district who's interested in serving that we just aren't aware of yet?
No one else stepped up.
They've had sufficient notice.
About two or three months. We've been, so it's been a bit of, so I expressed my uh, interest in doing this about nine months ago. And over the course of that time, we have finally found someone who is willing to take my place uh, as the main representative, so.
Thank you for answering our new persons questions.
Absolutely. No, that's not a new person's question. This is, uh, for what it's worth, I will say, serving on the Metro Policy Advisory Committee has been an honor and uh, super one. And I'm still, you know, as long as we do the next one too. Um, I will continue to sort of serve in the alternate role. Uh, it's a great way to learn about local government and what, and how the, how metro even works. I spent the first thirteen months not saying a word, just going, I don't know what I'm doing. So, yeah. Believe it or not, like that's true. I didn't say anything. Uh, is there any other further discussion on the motion at hand? All right, Rose, can you call the roll, please? Yes.
Opposed.
Aye.
Sheen Kim.
Aye.
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, the next thing we'd be then, uh, I guess I shouldn't read that. Would somebody like to do the next one?
How about that? How about I move that the Board of Directors nominate Mark Watson to serve on the Metro Policy Advisory Committee for the alternate position?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors nominate Mark Watson to serve on the Metro Policy Advisory Committee MPAC for the alternate position. Is there any further discussion?
Don't let us down.
It's, I would say it's been way more well attended since it's been mostly virtual, but I think there'll be some more meetings at Metro. Getting across town to the metro building at five o'clock may have been some of the detriment why people weren't stepping up, but. There's no further discussion, Rose, can you call the roll?
Yes.
Opposed.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Sheen Kim.
Aye. And Rose, it is a little bit challenging to hear um, hear your microphone.
Rose? Is it challenging to hear Rose?
Yeah, yeah. I can hear everyone else just fine, but just Rose. Thank you.
Give us a minute, Sheen. Lisa Allen.
Ooh, no, that's better. And I.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you all. We don't need to do the second part that's on our agenda because I believe we talked to the lawyer and he said, once we nominate, we just have to nominate. Now other boards have to approve my nomination or not, right? So, so yeah, I think we do not have to do that second part. So uh, Rose and I will alert the legal team at Metro that uh, we have approved Director Greenberg's nomination for the main role and that we've, we've nominated me for the alternate position. But let, let's do it anyway. Let's uh, let's do it anyway, just in case we want to do it again later. I think we're done. We're done. No, we're done. Yeah, we're done. Okay. Um, next is to acknowledge the motions, the gifts and donations. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors acknowledge the donations listed.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Ward that the Board of Directors acknowledged the donations listed. Is there any further discussion?
Yes. Okay. So I just had, I just want to call the board and figure out um, if there's a different way that we could do this. I know that last year we talked about, this was on the agenda and we vote all uh, vote about um, accepting these donations and acknowledging these donations. And I'm wondering if we can do this differently, like we can do it as a proclamation, because these things sometimes are months old. Um, if I understand correctly about um, the gifts that we're acknowledging and if we can't do it in a format like the proclamations, um, instead of taking the time to vote. What are your thoughts on that?
So just to add a little context, uh, as research Rose and I looked up and as of now, it is in policy. K, I'm trying to find it. It's KH, right?
It's in policy.
KHAR. It's a policy that we have to do it the way we do it. So to change it would be require a change of policy.
Could it be on the consent agenda or is that against?
So just a little historical context, all of the donations were part of the consent agenda for many, many years. And then one of the directors thought heading over a certain threshold, I believe it's five thousand is that what we do? Um, any over five thousand seemed uh, noteworthy. And so that director uh, indicated that we should break it out and acknowledge it separately. Um, and so it's been part of policy since then that we, we and we mistakenly, maybe not mistakenly, but like at some point we voted to accept them when they'd really already been accepted. So procedurally, it felt like whatever, you know, we were a little, so now they know the language is to acknowledge the donation. Um, and then call them out specifically in the board packet for their exceptional donations. So.
So the policy.
Personally, I'm okay with sticking with the way we do it, but if we, if we want to just make the proclamation, we can discuss that, but it would require an actual change in policy. It's not just something we can just decide to do for once.
A change in the policy that we make.
Yeah, we, we can change our policy, but we can't just decide to make it a proclamation or just something that we read and acknowledge that the board should just know. We can change the policy to do that. But uh, when I, when I first thought about this, I was like, oh, I can't just do it. We can't like, Director Ward and I just can't make that decision on our own. So we need to discuss it.
To Director Ward's point, at a future time, we could bring this up as a, as a policy change.
Um, if, if we want to, yeah.
If, and then engage.
It's not something we need to decide tonight.
Exactly.
I think the idea was just, uh, Director Ward wanted to make people aware of her thinking on making this change. So I mean, everybody can weigh in tonight if we would like to. And um, if it's something, if it's a policy change you'd like to consider, we can have Rose contact OSBA to um, draft us language that would be legally compliant.
I have another question about this.
Sure.
Um, Michelle, when we get the donations and yes, they can sometimes be months behind coming, they could be anything. Um, because you keep such a tight knit on that, I'm, I'm just trying to understand why we care. It's public knowledge anyway. It's public information. Anybody can ask about it. I make a donation to a school. The PTO makes a donation. A PAC makes a donation. I'm trying to figure out why there, there is required board action or do you feel we need to have board?
We do require board action because in policy, it was put in policy because another board member thought it was important to call out the exceptionally large donations because of their, you know, the character of them.
I got the policy part.
Yep.
Now I'm asking the expert, is that really necessary?
It is necessary to accept the donations to the district.
We, we have to, so the part of policy that we can change is whether or not we call it out individually and pardon me. We, they, we have to vote to accept them at some point either way. The question is, do we want to continue calling out larger donations uh, on their own? And if so, in what way would we do it? But yes, it, it, whether it's part of the consent agenda and just published or whether we call them out, they have to be voted on to be accepted. Yes.
Could we maybe just table this for a work session, conversation?
Yeah, that was sort of my intent was just to, to, none of us need to decide today what we want to do. If it's a conversation we would like to pursue, Rose can make it a work session item in the future for us to discuss how we might deal with this particular uh, section of our action items.
We can bring up the copy of the current policy.
Sure. Is there any further discussion of the motion on the table that the Board of Directors acknowledged the donations as listed? Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Patrick McGuire.
Yes.
Monique Ward.
Yes.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Sheen Kim.
Aye.
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Uh, Casey, do you want to tee this one up at all or do you have a microphone? All right.
This is just a follow-up board uh, action to our earlier discussion in the work session about uh, putting uh, a name on first reading for the new elementary school ES twenty-nine. Looking for a motion to put one of the names discussed earlier in the work session on that first reading.
I move.
Okay, go forward.
Okay, I move that the Board of Directors select Tamarack as the name for ES twenty-nine to be placed on first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded, I think first by Director Lopez, but also by Director Allen because she's very encouraging as well. That the Board of Directors select Tamarack as the name for ES twenty-nine to be placed on first reading. Is there any further discussion?
Just acknowledgement of all the, the work that was done to that, the names and the engagement with the community.
Yes, thank you Casey for leading that team and thank you to all the community members who participated in that committee. Um, and doing that work to bring that selection of names toward, for, for us to consider. Um, we're looking forward to the new school opening next fall.
September of twenty twenty-three.
September twenty twenty-three. All right. Is there any further, for, for context, if, if you're watching at home, uh, there's a bunch of data in the work session you could see. So. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All right, it's been, or you said that, so we'll call, will you call the roll, please?
Patrick McGuire.
Yes.
Monique Ward.
Yes.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Sheen Kim.
Aye.
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. You have a new name. So uh, just tangentially, the sort of next few steps are finding a principal, working on mascots, colors, things like that, right? Roughly in that order.
Certainly in that order. So we will begin the preliminary work for the colors and mascot.
Oh, great.
We'll be utilizing the staff and students at Witch Hazel and Rosedale to have a large uh, student input on that. We've been working with both principals preparing for this, so. Um, we'll continue that work and then once the, the final name is selected, we'll move into that process. Um, the principal part will come later.
Okay.
Uh, probably, uh, when, when we did um, Adfahli, it was after the first of the year, I believe, when I started that process. Yeah, so we, we are in the process of gathering our internal staff uh, together here in the next few weeks to talk about the boundary process. It um, we don't necessarily foresee a, a lot of obstacles with that because of the geographic location of the new school and where the majority of the students are and TV highway. But um, once we have that internal discussion, we will be able to provide a similar process like what we did up in North Plains.
Does the public get to know and understand what the boundary is for the school?
Yeah.
During the committee.
We will require, we have um, public um, open meetings. Uh, once we have that, traditionally what we've done on some of these smaller boundary processes is have some options um, ready once the internal staff is in it and then invite the uh, community in to provide input and and feedback and then follow up as we go.
Now traditionally does the bound, in this case, we have a new school. But we've got two boundaries that are participating in the creation of that. So how is that impacting those two schools' boundaries?
Well, that's, that's part of the process. I mean, you know, just from a geographic location of where the new school is, the closest school to, you know, divide or pull students and staff from is Rosedale. Now Witch Hazel is in the geographic location. It's kind of comes into a numbers balance of a number of students we want to open that new school with. And also if there are the other considerations about, for example, if there's students that are that live north of TV highway and it would make sense transportation wise and walk zone wise for them to maybe be moved down or east or west. Uh, so that's what we'll start to look at internally. So we have kind of a feel on numbers. Uh, first of all, because we need to kind of balance that out to open the new school. And then look also at future growth. We'll look at where the, you know, homes we know is in the location of the new school. That's a lot of homes are still being constructed, so making sure we have capacity. We only really want to do this boundary one time. So I think that'll all be encompassed in that and the board will be updated uh, throughout the process.
And so last time two board members sat on that committee.
Got it.
Yeah. So once we get to that, there.
My last question about that is, um, if memory serves me correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Witch Hazel has a special designation because it's a bi, it's a special program, it's bilingual, is that correct?
Dual language.
It's dual language program. Okay, so in doing so, is the new school going to be that? And if children are pulled away from that, that's what I was wondering.
That's a. Not decided yet.
Ah, okay. Yes. Yes.
And so depending on the population of the school, we would look at who the natural resources are in terms of language assets.
So we may not need a dual language program for that particular brand, but we may not, we don't know. I'm just concerned about, so I'm concerned about the parent who says my kid is happy at Witch Hazel and then all of a sudden we make the boundary and they say they have to move.
And all of our dual language are option schools where students can transfer into.
Yes.
And I just want to, I also want to clarify Nancy, that the majority of the students, the Rosedale is the closest split school. So I don't want somebody to be listening that Witch Hazel is going to be greatly impacted because it likely won't be greatly impacted, if at all. We would also have pathways for that, for them to continue with that program.
Okay.
The other tradition we have that we haven't mentioned is it's typically the newest member on cabinet that runs the boundary process. So. Audrey gets.
Audrey's up.
Yeah.
And maybe the newest board members too.
She'll receive some excellent training on how to do it.
Somebody got voluntold. Well, I'm not sure what happened. Okay, thank you, thank you. That's helpful.
It's off, I've read many times, the most trying thing you'll go through as a school board member is redistricting, so. You know.
See, I have a question.
Welcome to, yeah, before COVID, sure, it was a lot easier then. All right, our next item, Jordan, do you have some? Oh, sorry, she, yeah.
No worries. Um, Casey, I have a question. You, I know you had alluded to the, the population growth and, and still um, the building out of, of the development here in, like the South Hillsborough area. How does that take into consideration, given that that's probably a multi-year project? And with the school opening next fall, I guess what type of weight is that future population taken into consideration with it opening next year?
Yeah, pretty significantly. So, you know, we use a demographer, uh, most recently Davis Demographics who we partner with and they look at Yeah, pretty significantly, so you know, we use a demographer, uh, most recently Davis Demographics who we partner with and they look at. A huge series of data and they produced us with these longer range plans, but then they go back and update them for the near term. So what we've done even, we use this leading up into the bond and where to build and that kind of thing. Is looking at uh, when those homes were coming online, you know, there's estimates on, oh, there's going to be X number of homes built in twenty twenty. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, all the way through until it's built. And then there's a calculation that can be used for, you know, students per home based on birth rates and county demographics and historical data. So all of that um, was taken into consideration and will continue, will continue to be looked at. Um, for the future growth of that um, ES twenty-nine school um, in South Hillsborough. And then we'll also, you know, just to remind the board, uh, you know, we have um, other. Designated school sites within the South Hillsborough development should ES twenty-nine. Uh, start to get filled in our, our other schools, so that's where we will start to come up with more data and information about. You know, a, a next bond, do, do we need to look at that or another bond, so we do have room for growth outside of. Uh, this new school opening in September.
Got it, thank you.
You should join the committee, the software's cool, you like move the line a little bit and it tells you how many more people are in and how many pre-pulots. That's, it's a lot of fun. Jordan, do you have uh, anything to tee up our next uh, uh, action item?
Nothing other than it's a yearly uh, Microsoft licensing agreement, so um. This is the, uh, just an update to what we've done through the years.
They're all kind of listed in our packet. There, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors.
Oh, I, I move that the Board of Directors acknowledged the notice of intent to purchase by use of a cooperative purchasing agreement under the authority of the state of Oregon. Permissive cooperative procurements.
Second.
It's been moved by Director McGuire and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors acknowledged the notice of intent to purchase. By use of a cooperative purchasing agreement under the authority of the state of Oregon. O R S two seven nine eight dot two one five, permissive cooperative procurements, is there any further discussion? Rose, can you call the roll please?
Patrick Maguire?
Yes.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
She and Kim?
Aye.
Lisa Allen?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right, next one up, Michelle, do you have anything you want to add here?
Other than what's um, provided in the situation page, but I can answer any questions.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the non-inclusive, ex, non-exclusive temporary contracts for custodial agency services. Through ABM and Cascade Business Services.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Thomas that the Board of Directors approved the non-exclusive temporary contracts. For custodial agency services to ABM and Cascade Business Services, is there any further discussion?
Very briefly, I understand this was originally approved some time ago, uh, that the first version of it is, this is sort of an uh, additional extension.
So our um, cutoff for the request for proposal, uh, more formal. Um, activity that we do to solicit those high dollar contracts. Um, we did use supplemental services last spring to support our custodial staff, but it wasn't in the amount that we needed to go through the R P process. So we do have successful history um, accessing these supports, but. Um, this is because we're doing it from the beginning of the year, we're going to exceed the amount.
Thank you, and then just to be clear for everyone, um, in working with the classified union, they're supporter of this proposal.
They are in support of it, they, they, we've been in discussions with them, this isn't an uh, strategy to save dollars. For the district, it's really to sup- supplement this, the staff that we currently have. Our custodial positions will remain open until filled and as we fill those, we will be using less of these services.
Thank you.
Yep, I just have a question or two, so with the temp agency that we're using, the temp service, do these, do those employees have the opportunity to apply? For the district jobs? And if so, will there be like a finder's fee or such? That the district would have to pay to the temp agency?
Yes, and yes.
Okay.
And we have, we have like a certain period of time, I think each contractor's different. Um, that we could hire those staff after a period of time.
Okay, and we have, we can cover that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
I think we'd rather have them as employees, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right, is there any further discussion? Rose, can you call the roll please?
McGuire?
Yes.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
She and Kim?
Aye.
Lisa Allen?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye, motion carries. At this time, I'm going to recess our board meeting. And we will convene a meeting of the local contract review board. All right, uh. Jordan and Michelle, do you want to add context about why we're doing this?
Um, this one is a sole source and that's really due to Google's uh, requirements that you can only have one reseller as part of your Google. Um, system. And we're buying two things here, Google Voice and uh, G Suite for Education, uh, Google Workspace. Um, and we're only able to buy that from one reseller even though it's offered from multiple. There's really only one Google Voice um, education type reseller. Um, and so that puts us with amplified IQ, so that's the reason for this. Um, the other piece of this is the pricing of it is set as well by Google, so it doesn't really matter what reseller you buy from, you're going to pay the same exact price, so. Um, really more procedural, uh, this is how we have to procure it as a sole source from one vendor because of the contract.
And the sole source contract, nature of the sole source contract and the. Value of the contract is why we have to do it as a contract review board.
Yes.
Any other questions for Jordan? Would anybody care to make a motion? A long one.
Sure, uh, I move that the Board of Directors acting in the capacity of the local contract review board. Approve the sole source procurement and exemptions from competitive bidding. And authorize the purchase of Google Voice and G Suite for Education Enterprise licenses from Amplified I T C D W.
Second.
It's been moved by Director McGuire and seconded by Director Ward that the Board of Directors acting in the capacity of the local contract review board. Approve the sole source procurement and exemptions from competitive bidding and authorize the purchase of Google Voice. And G Suite for Education Enterprise licenses from Amplified I T C D W. Is there any further discussion? Uh, do we ask for audience time here? Any audience comments? All right. Rose, would you like to call the roll please?
Air?
Yes.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
She and Kim?
Aye.
Lisa Allen?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye, that motion carries. I will adjourn the meeting of the local contract review board. We will reconvene the board meeting of Hillsborough School District. Just in time for reports and discussions. What? Hit the gavel, it's not terrible. It's all right. Uh, Michelle, you are first up with our financial report.
Thank you Chair Watson, um, I don't have a lot to add to what was provided in the packet. Um, just to note that we do have a new risk manager in the district, Mary Beth Punchakar joined us over the summer. And she's taking some of the feedback I've given her about the incident reports and, and will be bringing forward maybe a new format and, and of course incorporating any suggestions you have into that. Starting next month. So, um, it's not in this report.
That's why we don't have it.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, also, we have two cash flow reports for the general fund, one is the unaudited cash flow for twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And then our, of course, year-to-date through August for the current year, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Michelle, remind us of our audit rhythm?
Our audit rhythm, so our fiscal year runs from July first to June thirtieth. And we were, are targeting December uh, board meeting to bring forward our financial report, our annual financial report. And um, before uh, the board meeting that evening will be a meeting of the audit committee to review uh, any information and. Have any questions answered directly by the auditor. Um, and so then you will see those final numbers.
Thank you. I just had a call, I thought it was really interesting to highlight out of your. Report, the pilot on the in and out boards and like real-time background checks so that they're quicker and. Some long ones to volunteer, they can just do it onsite, so that'd be exciting for our district.
Yeah, that is very exciting to have a standard across the district, so we are hoping for a very successful pilot.
All right.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Michelle? Travis, you have our Division twenty-two assurances and you have the information on that.
It is my responsibility and honor to give the annual update on uh, where we stand with Division twenty-two assurances and I. I do want to take the time to do the slideshow that is presented to us by the Oregon Department of Education, just to provide a little bit of education about what Division twenty-two is and. Um, update you even about um, some things that are going to change with rules in the future, so. We'll click through these really quickly because I know you've reviewed this already, um, go ahead and advance another one please. So Division twenty-two are the rules for uh, elementary and secondary education in the state of Oregon. And when a rule is assigned to Division twenty-two, it becomes a part of Oregon's standards. And those are the education standards that the Oregon Legislature and the school board has determined must be met in order for a district to be a standard school district, quote unquote. So tonight's report is on how we um, measure up in terms of those standards, one more please. So the why behind Division twenty-two assurances is to make sure that we have a high quality and equitable educational experience for every student in the state of Oregon. That all students have the opportunity to benefit from our educational system. And also where districts are not in compliance with Division twenty-two, we can receive technical assistance from the department, so districts work. Collaboratively with the Department of Education to stay up to speed with Division twenty-two requirements. Next slide please. There are uh, over fifty individual rules within Division twenty-two and we as a team go through those that are accountable to us as cabinet members and we make, we assure. The state that we're in compliance with those fifty-plus rules. Uh, they fall into four large buckets, which are teaching and learning, health and safety, district performance and accountability, and human resources and staffing, so I want to thank our team. Uh, it's not just me who puts together the documentation to report to the department that we're in compliance. One more slide please. I think this one must be animated like it zooms in things on the side, yeah. So this will just show you, in your packet, it's more clear that these are examples of the things that we've dealt with that are part of Division twenty-two rules coming from the legislature and the State Board of Education. Keep going Angela, please. One more. Uh, Division twenty-two has gone, undergone some changes with the pandemic and so a couple of things have been waived. Uh, you're aware that essential skills requirements have been waived, although we're still accountable for local performance assessments, also the Kinder assessment was waived for twenty-one, twenty-two. Also, there was an additional Division twenty-two requirement for last year, which was the submission of an operational plan. Uh, we've called that the blueprint or the ready schools documentation that we've submitted and that became statutorily required of us during the pandemic. One more slide please. There are three steps for us to report Division twenty-two assurances for last year. Um, the superintendent or designate reports uh, to the school board and the community, our status, we post our status on the website, which is already done. And then we submit uh, the minutes from tonight's meeting to the Department of Education to prove that we have. Stated our compliance with Division twenty-two to the board and the community. One more slide please. So I'm happy to report that the Hillsborough School District is compliant with Division twenty-two in all areas. One caveat, as you know, we continue to work with O D E to complete our corrective action plan under the rule. For postponement of purchase of state adopted instructional materials. And we will be in sync with the seven-year cycle across content areas after this school year, so. Our plan will be completed, we um. Can be proud of our district's compliance with the basic requirements of Division twenty-two, especially in terms of our equity of access. To programming for all of our students. Um, we continue, uh, we will continue to struggle to meet requirements without stable and adequate funding, so. Hold on to that up for just a minute because one of the things I'll tell you is coming up is a challenge for us to meet. And might um, influence the earlier conversation about legislative advocacy. Also, I just want to give a shout out to uh, Michelle and our curriculum leaders and our teachers for using S I A and Esser dollars and summer dollars. In order to invest in curriculum for our students in our district and being really wise um, with every dollar that we get to invest in our curriculum moving forward, so. That's an improvement for us over the last five years, thank you. Looking ahead. Uh. You'll see, thank you Angela. New and revised rules and requirements are going to be coming up in the uh, Division twenty-two report for next year, looking back at this year. Um, the second one and the third one, we already do in terms of operational plans in agreements with volunteer organizations. The first one, uh, P E requirements is going to be difficult for us, we have met the increased P E requirements. For middle school students, which had been an increase to one hundred and eighty minutes per week. Um, but we'll be short by about ten minutes when the rule goes to two hundred and twenty-five minutes, we have forty-three minute periods at our middle schools. And we've done that to go to a seven-period day, so we would be. Uh, just if we'd maxed out student contact minutes, which we have to two hundred and eighty-two minutes. We are just shy of our contractual limit of two hundred and eighty-eight contact minutes, which makes it mathematically impossible to get to that. Extra X number of minutes per day to get to two twenty-five.
Travis, are we the only ones having that problem?
Negative Nancy. Other district, other districts have come up short of the one hundred and eighty minutes. And part of the reason that I'm letting you know this is so you can be well informed about our situation and others as we look forward to this increased number of minutes. Our stance right now is that we believe it's not worth. Changing our seven-period day or maximum number of minutes in order to accommodate the increased number of minutes that will be required of us and we're not alone in stating that out loud.
Thank you.
We're providing great physical education to our students in middle. Uh, one more slide please. Uh, two more tag details are things that we already do in practice, which is about um, our responsibility to train. Our talented and gifted uh, leaders and to post information on our website, make it available to families. And with that. Happy to answer any questions?
Questions for Travis?
What's the audit for those twenty-two? Just if, if we have to be compliant, how do we? When do they come in and audit to, to know formally?
I've never known them to come to us to audit, they rely on us to attest to our compliance.
Oh, so they don't audit, they just want you to certify and attest and.
Usually come in the form of like a specific concern, I would predict if they knew that we were negligent in one area, there would be folks at the department who could come and say. Hey, you guys don't. Do P E at all.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what's wrong?
So for the P E aspect of that, we simply said, hey, this is how we're calculated and we're going to be minus this much. And we feel it's important to stay where we are, but this is what we're going to meet.
I don't think we've addressed it yet, because it's not a requirement yet.
We do it one year. Backward, so next year. We would say in this school year, we have this number of minutes and therefore we're out of compliance with that requirement, if it's still a requirement at that time.
Makes sense, thank you.
Yeah, good question.
And to dovetail with our previous conversation upstairs, this is definitely something that is on many, the radar of many legislators. Um, the legislature has changed pretty dramatically since this. Uh, rule was adopted and will. Change almost by one-third or something, that's, you know, likely in the next one, so. I wouldn't be surprised to see them address it, I also am a little sympathetic, right, like. The country has a problem with childhood obesity, if we don't address it in school, where are we going to address it, so, um. So yeah, I, it, it's a, but I would expect legislators to be discussing this. This session.
Yeah, so um, you likely answered this and I just missed it, um, something I had a question on when I was reading through this, the, on the slide talking about. The corrective action plan on instructional materials, so if we're in compliance, why do we need a corrective plan?
We have, um. I don't know the technicalities of it, but when we, in, in the Division twenty-two, there's a, an actual rule that says. You need to submit a, a corrective action plan if you're not. Up to sync with the seven-year cycle. up to sync with the seven-year cycle in an area. So for example, our language arts adoption has lagged. They know that we're in the process of having adopted K-six materials, and now we're going for seven, twelve materials. So we knew to notified our partner there. There's an office that I call and have a relationship with, and I say, hey, Susan, we're going to be late and in June we'll apply, we'll have adopted our materials through high school and we'll be in compliance. And then she asked me to document that timeline and the predicted date, and then that gets approved and sent back to us. So our plan is approved and therefore we're compliant with Division twenty-two.
Okay, so we're, we're not in compliance with the, the timeline, but we're in compliance with the requirement to have a plan to deal with that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? And this meets some kind of legal obligation for you to tell us about it, right?
I tell you about it. And then in the notes that are captured from tonight, I take that PDF. And once the minutes are approved next month, by November first or fifteenth, I upload that to a secret website somewhere where that's documented as the public disclosure of our Division twenty-two compliance.
Okay. Thank you, Travis.
Is there, last question, is there a need for us to adopt that sooner? Why, I just, no.
We're way ahead of schedule. It'll be in September. We're, we're fine. Thank you.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is some ARs and policies. The uh individual members of cabinet responsible for each one are listed there. If you have questions, you can direct them to them or ask anything general now or whatever. But they are going to be on first review and would be adopted at our next regular session. Not these ones, ARs, no. I'm just lumping them all together. ARs and policies, right, but yeah. We, yeah, we don't approve ARs, but we approve policies. So but the, so the policies for review would be placed on review and approved at the next regular session, right? So if you have questions, uh, please address them to the appropriate staff member. All right. HCU and HEA reports. Thank you, Melody.
There we go. Um, been a while since I've been here in person, so. Um, so hello and welcome back um to another school year. I hope everyone was able to find some um time over the summer break to make, to make great memories with family and friends. I know I did. Um, this year has started off feeling a little more normal than last school year. However, we are still facing a large number of COVID cases with our classified and licensed staff having to stay homesick. Many are also experiencing their first cold and flu in two years. Um, it really is amazing the protection we've had the past two years with masks, regular hand washing and surface cleaning. We are all hoping that this was a, is a short cold and flu season with all these things happening. We are all working hard to support our students each day to have an amazing school year. As we start into the new school year, we are still facing a large number of vacancies in our district, among many among the classified staff. We are at a critical level in transportation, specifically the drivers. But it does not stop there. We have shortages in many classifications. It may not be the same level as the drivers, but it is still short, and this does have an impact on the services that the students in HSD receive. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of the classified employees. We as classified are hardworking, loyal employees that love our jobs and supporting the students of HSD. There is no greater joy than seeing a young person solve a problem that they have been struggling with and the pride that comes from helping them along that journey. We call those aha moments. Right now, we are looking for some creative solutions, ideas pushed out to our supervisors and buildings to change the feelings that there is no value in what, that there is no value in what we do. We are told we are valued, but we are not, but they are not feeling it. The burnout is real with the shortages and doing more with less helps add to feeling less valued. We look forward to working with the district to come up with creative solutions to the challenges of this school year. Even with the challenges this school year has, we are certain that we can all find the many successes that are classified and other staff members will have this school year, along with the success and aha moments of our students. We may all find a way to celebrate our students, or maybe we all find a, a way to celebrate our students and staff members' accomplishments. We look forward to working with you on the betterment of HSD. Thank you. This podium is not built or intended for a person that's five feet tall on a good day. Anyway. You're right. So, good evening Chair Watson, Vice Chair Thomas, fellow board members, Superintendent Scott, and administrative leaders. My name is Mary K. Babcock. My pronouns are she, her, and. I'm a proud educator going on twenty-six years, and I'm the Hillsborough Education President, proudly representing one thousand three hundred Hillsborough educators. I'm humbled and honored to represent our district educators as their union president. Many people ask me why I want to do this work. Well, here's my why. Over the years, I've paid my dues and I've supported my union. As a result, my union family has been there for me when I needed their support. Additionally, my union has nurtured me by providing opportunities to grow as a better educator and as a leader. I feel strongly that it's time that I step up in solidarity and support my union by taking on this leadership role and represent our district educators, students, and their families. I've been met in this very room by people who do not share my union values. I met them where they were, and I listened to them, and as a result, they listened to me. They walked away with hope, and so did I. At the end of our conversation, they said they weren't anti-union, and it was realized that we're all seeking the same essential needs. You know what? That's progress. This ignites in me the desire to work diligently to dismantle the vitriol and the stigma toward our union by building a partnership of trust with our district, our community, to ensure our working conditions are safe and our workload is manageable. As HEA president, my mantra for our educators is our working conditions are students' learning conditions. When one or the other is not operating effectively, the system is in need of maintenance and/or repair. It is clear to me after being on the job for two and a half months that if we work together to make this happen, we will get our educators to remain in this profession. If we offer learning conditions that are safe and inclusive for all of our students, they will have the capacity to learn and thrive to be on a pathway to graduate. According to the National Education Association article titled, "Take This Job and Love It", Kevin Adams explains what educators want the most to maintain positive working conditions. Now, listen up, this is good stuff. Time to connect and collaborate with trusted colleagues. The agency to create lessons that work for their students and the autonomy to make job-related decisions based on their expertise. That one's so good, I'm going to repeat it. The autonomy to make job-related decisions based on their expertise. And of course, games and professional. They also want to feel the power of their voice and the strength of their union behind them to improve conditions. Since school has officially started, I've heard our members ask for these needs to be met over and over again and again. Due to shortage of support staff mentioned by my dear president, our members are getting burnt out and we haven't even completed the first month of school. As acknowledged earlier this evening, our students have been impacted by the pandemic and have more needs now than ever. Even with fewer students across the state, the ones we have need additional time and support to recover and breath. From bus drivers to custodians to instructional assistants, we appreciate the gravity of the work the district is doing to hire additional supports. However, we would like you to consider offering supportive positions as full-time positions versus temporary to be more attractive to applicants. This would also help provide stability for our students that need the support the most. Educators are called to the profession because they love working with students. Watching my students learn and grow is what made my career the most rewarding experience I could ever imagine. In recent years, I watch with heartbreak as my colleagues have struggled. While many have left the district and are worse, they've left the profession entirely. The key factors to remain in the profession are the same as any profession. We want to feel trusted. We want to feel respected. We want to feel valued. So many of our members worked through the most challenging school years of all time. Last year, thinking that the district would acknowledge their hard work and dedication by allocating the House Bill forty-thirty money to them upon receiving the funds. Most of our neighboring school districts have shown their appreciation of educators by paying out retention stipends. HSD has access to these funds now. We're hoping our conversations with how quickly the House Bill forty-thirty dollars will be delivered to our educators will show them your appreciation for them returning to work this year and for our new hires for entering the profession. Lastly, we would like to encourage everyone who is with me to participate, if you can, by voting in this November, excuse me, by voting in this November's general election. Make a plan. Make sure you're registered. Check to make your, make sure your information is accurate. Get to know your candidates and their values for public education. Then for all that is good on this earth, vote. I look forward to working with all of you and getting to know you better during my term. Thank you for your time and your consideration at hearing our members' voices. There needs to improve our condition. Thank you.
Did you put that there ahead of time or has always been there? Ah, nicely done. All right.
I like that.
All right, uh, discussion time is our next item. We recently been with our students. Either you guys can choose who, whoever wants to go first. Uh, I think we talked about this porch, chances basically say whatever you want, plug stuff in your school or just observations, yeah. You can say whatever you want.
He didn't really mean that.
No, I do.
Yeah, hello, uh, my name is Yvette Alonso Garcia, and I was just going to make a statement about mental health and how it's important um on students and in staff. Uh, uh, mental health is really important because, you know, it just affects us as students, as learners. Um, uh, just this couple first weeks have been stressful because of my schedule and new counselors. Have to reintroduce myself to, you know, uh, new staff, and that's really nerve-wracking uh to me since, you know, uh, you know, I'm still trying to get off my uh comfort zone. Uh, but yeah, it's, it's been great. Um, and for staff of, especially for the counselors, I saw that, you know, since a lot of students were, their schedules, schedules were mixed up. Uh, they were getting students by students by students, and I'm not sure if they actually had a lunch or a break. So uh, I actually had an encounter with a teacher, um, and uh, you know, we shared uh different comments, and uh she told me that she didn't have lunch because, you know, she was, she had to work with other students to help them on, you know, their learning. And I think that's um that mental health is really important, not just on us, but like on staff. So just uh, I guess to put that word out uh on just reminding teachers and staff to, you know, take a moment, take a breath, um, and, you know, worry about themselves and then, so they could uh help us as students too. Um, yeah, thank you.
Um, my name's Kaylee. Hello. Um, I just kind of wanted to touch on what you guys were talking about. Um, I really appreciate you guys coming here. Uh, I think that as students, we see it like kind of firsthand how draining, draining it can be on the students uh or on the teachers and also on the students. I think that it's um really difficult to see kind of some of your peers that you've got out of school since kindergarten stop, start dropping out. Or uh teachers that you know really help those students and really take the extra time quit because um of lack of support or appreciation. So I really do appreciate you guys for coming here and vocalizing that. Um, like me, for example, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with um the advisory classes in our uh school districts. It's like a thirty-minute period, four days a week. Um, you're supposed to have that teacher uh freshman year through senior year. I'm currently a senior and I've had a new teacher every single year. Even though they're supposed to help you graduate and stay on track with your career pathway. So I mean, I totally understand, and I, I feel really bad for the teachers that they feel, you know, they're so under-supported and underappreciated that they do feel a need to do a career switch or a district or a school switch. Um, I think that I'm, I'm really glad that you guys are raising that to attention because it's a strain on teachers and students as well.
Next up for superintendent's time.
All right, thank you. Um, you know, I, I want to start by just uh a, addressing the HCU comments that were made about not feeling valued. And you know, that was, that was, those were comments that we heard last year as we were bargaining and um, last year being incredibly challenging year, and I do want to acknowledge all of the challenges that all staff have had as we've gone over the, as we've gone through these last couple of years. But I would counter by saying that in the midst of a national shortage of staff, um, whether it be education or whether it be any other industry out there, um, I feel like we've made the effort to show how much we do value our classified staff members. Um, whether it be the um contract that was recently settled and the partnership that it took to do that or um the fact that as soon as that contract was settled, we actually re-engaged immediately to address the um hourly rate of our hardest-to-fill positions. And we are the folks that initiated that conversation in order to get HCU members more money and to fill those positions. So um, the other thing I would say that I think shows how much we value uh this partnership is that during the pandemic, when other districts were laying off staff members and people were losing not only salary, but they were losing benefits. We worked to keep every staff member and to make sure that everybody was employed and were receiving insurance benefits. So I would counter that by saying I understand the, the challenges, but I think we have demonstrated that we do value each and every one of our staff members, and I, and I believe that our actions um show, illustrate that. I look forward to future conversations around that, but I would, I just want to counter that. And I, I don't want that to be a narrative that just continues to play without other information coming out. With that said, um, just walking around the schools this year, it feels much different than it has in the last couple of years. Um, there are, there are challenges, of course, but there's also a sense of optimism that hasn't been there for the last couple of years. And just seeing that in the staff members' faces and in the students' faces, it's, it's just really fun to be around. I'd also like to highlight, we had two um groups of staff that did presentations at Equity Conferences last week. Uh Fran's team did a presentation and the, the room was filled. Uh, the importance of individual well-being and how, how an entire community impacts that. And then we also did a presentation on the Career and College Pathways work. Um, our discussion earlier this evening in the work session around the legislative priorities, I just cannot uh highlight enough how important that's going to be for us and our well-being as we move forward into future years. Um, it's going to be incredibly important and, and acting now is going to set us up for success in the coming years. Um, so will inaction. Inaction will also um forge a path for us in the couple of years, in the next couple of years. So the time for advocacy, advocacy is definitely now. It's going to really matter for our students. Finally, I'd say we are excited to be one step closer to being, to actually naming uh the, the new elementary school. It, if you sit in on bond meetings or construction meetings, it's lovingly called ES twenty-nine or Elementary School twenty-nine. So to be a step closer to giving it a name um and making it uh more real, we're very excited about that. Thank you.
All right, board members' time. Uh, should we just do online then here ping pong? All right. Uh, we'll start with Sheen. Sheen, do you have anything you would like to add tonight?
No, nothing other than welcome back, everyone. Um, new school year, hopefully a brighter school year at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Allen, do you have anything to add tonight?
Um, not particularly, but pretty soon I will be um recruiting colleagues on the board to join me at the South Meadows Middle School production of Ha Ha House. Um, so just be prepared to be invited to go see that wonderful um theatrical masterpiece. But let's not tell But let's not tell December, so just like be ready to say yes.
Alright, good to know. Uh, Director Lopez, you have anything to add tonight?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of things. Um, so I actually attended our OSBA retreat this weekend. And so we had a lot of conversations about our legislative um, priorities and our work plan. Um, and so, uh, I can't stress enough how important it is to vote in November as our um, um, union president mentioned earlier. Um, there is definitely, I think, a challenging times and a threat to public education. So ensuring that we are having representatives that are champions of public education is really important. Um, that support our work and our district priorities. Um, so make sure that you just get educated and that you do your civic duty and vote. Um, I think, I, I mean, I can't stress enough how difficult the profession is to fill and also all of the other support areas around education. And I think that says a lot about our value system as a country because that's a problem that every district is having, every state is having. Um, so it's just something that I, I want to make sure that I acknowledge that, as Mike mentioned, we try our best as a district to show our appreciation and our support. But we have a lot of struggles around our funding structure and just the overall rhetoric around public education happening. And so it is challenging times for sure. Um, I wanted to also say fall is here and of course flu season is here. So COVID isn't over, wash your hands, cover your face. If you have a cold, be nice to everyone, um, don't pass that around. Um, and I'm so happy to see all the back-to-school pictures from parents and families and um, a shout out especially to my own kids, Natalie and Benjamin and my son and his last year. And so I'm so excited for this school year and happy that things are looking, looking different than it has been in the past and that there's this energy and we have more sunshine right now than we've had normally. So that's also, I mean, global warming, but you know, I enjoy the sunshine um, that we have right now, um, as it's, it's this fall. So I just want to say thank you to my fellow board members as well for your time and commitment to this work.
Director Ward, do you have anything to add tonight?
Just to say thank you as always to um, the staff and their willingness to answer questions and sometimes get bombarded with questions. So I really appreciate that and again, it's great to be back and to see everyone. Thank you.
Director Warren, anything to add tonight?
Uh, yeah, um, a few things, uh, I, since I joined the board a few months ago, I've been reaching out to folks I know in, um, everyone I know in, uh, experts in the field, which mostly means people I know who did PhDs are now working in academia as professors, researchers of education policy, just asking, hey, as a new school board member, what are the top things you? And I've got a lot of really interesting feedback and ideas and um, one of the things that is an interesting through, through line that really confirms something I've always believed is that there's so much research right now on the importance of early literacy. And so I think that um, as we go into the budget cycle, but even before then, I'm going to be an advocate for devoting as much resources as we can to uh, reading intervention specialists and people to help our students uh, have that, that early literacy that makes such a big difference. And another uh, through line is, um, we talked about valuing our, our staff. And I think that one of the most, what I'm finding is that one of the most key predictors of student success is the teacher engagement and instructor, classified instructional staff engagement. And so creating sustainable conditions for teachers um, is one of the key things we do. And so I really appreciate all of our leadership that gives so much attention to that. And then on a, on a more lighter note, uh, I, many people know I'm a big football fan and usually I have a, a friend, family of a friend or something that's in one of our high school football teams. I don't this year, so I'm just going to start dropping into high school football games. So if anyone has a friend or family member who you want, you mean to come see their team, you let me know. Because I'm trying to decide which one, when I have a Friday free, which one to go see. So we get bored of doing that.
Tom's having to add tonight.
Um, I just want to urge our, both of our unions to understand um, that the complexity that I'm learning about having, this is ending the first year and now moving into our second year is just absolutely phenomenal. Um, there's a part of me that wants to say that if I had every available dollar, I would give it to you. There is no doubt that you deserve it. The reality is in Salem where we have these not very well thought of, thought of algorithms and formulas about how to fund and how to staff and care models. And I'm seeing this across the board and I'm, I'm very, very concerned. And so this is part of my intrigue to you to join us when we, when, whenever we go to Salem. I don't know if I have to go there by myself with a picket sign or whatever. But we, we have got to get their attention to understand that crazy algorithms are not what gets the job done. It, it just isn't. And the kids, when you talk about current service levels, it's highly irritating and quite frankly, it's insulting to talk about current service levels when you have children who have been impacted, students that have been impacted, teachers that have impacted, administrators that have impacted in ways that no one has ever seen in their lifetime. So it's, maybe I'm talking to Salem, maybe I am. Um, but I think that it's really important and maybe this is to the people that I can't say out in the community. Please educate yourself, please vote. If we don't, we could lose what we have for public education. That is a serious threat to our community. It's a considerable threat. And I just feel like, and it's not something that you have to feel good about in film are warm and fuzzy because it's not warm and fuzzy, it's painful. The idea that we could lose what we have is absolutely unforgivable. And imagine if they come to us and say, oh, we're going to give you a cut of four percent. Just think about that for a minute. So I just, I don't, I don't want the teachers and administrators and classified staff, I don't want anybody to think in terms of, if I don't get a raise, I am not valued. That is not the case. And if there is no other message that I would want to give to someone, that's the message. This is an incredible school district. And you guys have a, a just incredible leadership and incredible panel and cabinet, sorry, that's what you call it. And I just wanted to say that.
Absolutely, go down on your own, but there will probably also be some organized events, feel free to join us in those as well. We have ridden in buses as teams before and hopefully we'll have that opportunity again. Um, yes, please vote, I just changed my registration today. I believe my house has an offer except for a year of ordeal. I think uh, my official, I'm worried back later. Um, the, so yes, uh, for the first time I get to vote in the city of Hillsborough, so that's kind of cool. So for all, for those of you who know, like Hillsborough School District encompasses much more than the city of Hillsborough. North Plains, Cornelius, unincorporated Washington County. So for years, I felt a very strong kinship with all of those people because although I was part of the Hillsborough School District and loved the city of Hillsborough, I did not live in the city of Hillsborough, so. Um, and now my address is in the city of Hillsborough and I look forward to, and I'm working to make another one in the city of Hillsborough. So, uh, yeah, very excited for that. And yes, we'll, we'll probably have some events to go down and advocate. Um, great to be back for our first board meeting here, glad that this is becoming a more common occurrence. And again, thank you very much to our technical team for being here tonight. Um, it really does make it very seamless for us to be able to uh, hybridize our board meetings very fluidly. Um, and yeah, if you got a cold, stay home, if you got COVID, stay home. Maybe you got COVID, don't join remotely, but you know, get a nap. Um, so, uh, I guess my last thing, uh, uh, fall is here, as Eric mentioned, which is awesome. And the fall series of superintendent chats have been published. Rose, if you could, or Kathy, whoever, please send us calendar invitations to all those. We may not be able to make it, but it's nice to like look in your outlook and see that spot held just in case you are able to make it. So yeah, if you could please, you know, and to be out there listening, they are great opportunities for you to connect directly with the superintendent, probably a board member or two would be there, Beth is usually there. So just plenty of representation from the district to, in a small forum, ask questions, um, air grievances and get problems solved. So I look forward to seeing everybody out there, I'm glad we were able to start those back up again. Um, look forward to eating at all of those places again. Alright, thank you, everybody, and our meeting is adjourned.